Welcome to the planning board meeting of December 15th, 2021. Our last meeting of this year. I'll begin with roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delil is not here. Bob Cow.
I'm here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker and so far from the planning office. I believe we only have Andy Port, but we may have others as we get into the applications for tonight. Speaking of which, we have a public hearing for Turnpike Redevelopment LLC, 166 to 168 Route 1, a smart growth plan approval continued from November 3rd. Our other business includes an approval not required for 47 Marlborough Street and another one for 153 Story Ave. And it's at an intersection with one Lieutenant Leary Drive. We have approval of minutes and updates. So we'll move right into the public hearing. And where we have a revised plan from our previous discussion with the applicant and I will let the applicant decide who's going to speak first.
Hello, this is Joe Circovich from Arrow Street Architects. And I will be speaking first and then I'll be joined later by Scott Cameron of the Moore and Cameron Group. As well as Bob Ulich from the Halverson Group as well. And I think Andy Port is going to flip through the slides for us.
Sure, just say next as needed.
Okay, are we all set to go?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I think Andy, the first five slides, we could probably skip through those rather quickly. This is just context that we went through in the previous meeting. We all know where the site is. If you could get to slide number six, sheet six. So this is our previous site plan from November 3rd. And we had listed here some of the concerns, comments and suggestions that you folks had for us on ways to improve the design. And I'll just go through these kind of quickly, just to remind ourselves what we had discussed previously. Some of your suggestions included simplifying the overall site plan. One of the key comments we felt was that the size of the building and the footprint did not fit the site properly. That was a key comment that we acted on and made a big difference in the coming slides that you'll see an improvement to the design. The vehicular circulation to and from Route 1, there were too many curb cuts. Vehicular circulation within the site and the north and south parking lots were a bit confusing. Pedestrian paved connections were a bit too narrow. Pedestrian circulation from Hill Street to the CCRT, that whole route was kind of compromised by the parking lot on the south and going past the parking ramp. The placement of the parking ramp was also in question, as well as the geometry of that ramp going down to the lower level. Visibility of the north retail area was questioned when it was connected to the building and sort of set back from Route 1. And parking and pedestrian circulation was not convenient to the live work units that are along Route 1. The build, the comments about the overall architecture and the materials we were using were generally good. So those were the things that we heard. And like I said, the key thing that we heard was that the building was too big. We should reduce it and we have acted on that and it made a big difference to some of the improvements that we were able to make because of that suggestion throughout the site. So if you want to skip to, so on this slide, we're showing a comparison of the previous site plan located below the dark outline and then the new building outline in red. Just briefly highlighting below items one through six, the changes that have occurred with this reduced building footprint. The overall building length has shrunk by 50 feet. Item two, the building footprint has been reduced by 3,500 square feet. The building height is still the same at four stories, mostly across the entire building now, not necessarily all of it, but more than was before. Previously, we had three and four stories. Now it's mostly four stories. The undeveloped land area has increased by over 8%, which has, you know, created a lot of opportunities for public realm engagement in the site. The unit count has dropped to 92. Previously, we had 94 and, you know, on this site, we were allowed 99 total. Affordable units have also dropped by one. And the surface parking has been reduced by about eight parking spaces. And in conjunction with that, also some of the paved surfaces have also been reduced. So I think that the takeaway from this is that that reduction in the building's size has been a key element in the slides that you'll see coming up and how we have made improvements to answer all your concerns from that previous slide. Andy, the next two slides are just a summary of some of the things that we've done to the site. I don't want to go through and read all of these just because we'll get to them in the coming slides. So if you could skip to slide 10. Okay, and that shows the neighborhood crossing master plan. And just a reminder from the previous presentation, some of our goals in the master plan and what we want to do with this building is create a building that's really kind of a gateway both to Newburyport as you're going down Newburyport Turnpike toward the north, as well as a gateway to the 40 yard district and the commercial area as you're leaving Newburyport. So we want that building to be kind of a gateway. We also want it to be an anchor for the Newburyport Crossing neighborhood and use that as a connector to one Boston Way and three Boston Way. And we're going to use that Clipper City Rail Trail to make that connection to the rest of the complex and really make it feel more like a neighborhood. In addition, we want to use that Clipper City Rail Trail as a connector to other parts of Newburyport and spaces beyond. So it's kind of a real crux, a real connector, a real nexus that has multiple uses here. And you can see that we've got three connections now from the Clipper City Rail Trail to our site because we feel that it's, it's so important to integrate it to our bill, our building and the overall master plan. Next slide. So this is the, the new building size in the new site plan. And I just want to give you a kind of a quick summary of what we'll be talking about in the coming slides. And we'll be touching on each one of these in detail as we go forward. But there are five areas that we're going to be discussing. First of all, the north parking lot in the retail area and how that's changed. Then the second area is along Route 1, the pedestrian corridor between the north and the south corner of the site. Number three is the southern triangle there that we call the community green near the Hill Street Connector. Number four is the area right in front of the entry that we're calling the residential courtyard. And then the fifth area is the multiple connections along the rail trail and the landscaping along that hedge. So with that brief summary, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Cameron to talk a little bit about the site plan.
Thanks, Joe. And Andy, you can, you can stay on that plan perfectly. Good evening. So my name is Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group. Thanks for having us again tonight. From the site design perspective, my, my role here in addition to supporting Joe and Bob Ulich on the building and landscape architectural elements was to try incorporate some technical adjustments to focus on some areas that were raised by the board and staff. So starting with the Parker Street driveway, for the most part, that has remained the same. We did make an adjustment to shift it closer to the 28 Parker Street parcel to the north. And yes, the landscape strip along that edge, especially near Parker Street, got pretty darn close to zero, you know, zero lot line. What it did is it really embellished the, and widened the landscape buffer between the, the parking and the, in the Clipper City Rail Trail. So we were really trying to get as close as we could, you know, eight, eight to 10 feet ideally along that entire kind of westerly edge along the rail trail. As you come up, you'll see to the right, right before the cul-de-sac, we moved the solid waste recycling enclosure again to that easterly lot line opposite the rail trail. So we pulled that away from the rail trail and angled it a little bit so that it would be accessible by the, the pickup truck. And then as you enter the turnaround, we increase the diameter of the turnaround going from 35 to 40 feet. We still included the handicap parking space nearest to the front entrances to the building, kind of right between the live work units and the main building entrance. And then we also included more of a, I guess, a conventional drop off shoulder on the cul-de-sac. These would be for your, your day to day, you know, either Amazon deliveries, postal deliveries, et cetera, that area, short term to drop off. Then as you navigate around the cul-de-sac turnaround in a counterclockwise direction, there would be the entrance to the underground garage, which Joe creatively redesigned to be fully enclosed. So the ramp is fully covered and kind of slopes down into the ground. And we're going to add on top of that a green roof structure, which is a sustainable design element. Another charge that was put, put on us to add more sustainability and low impact design elements. So we did make the covering over that garage ramp down into the, as a green roof. And you'll see more of that on the color illustrations. Moving back, also obviously with the ramp, this is a much better configuration for the ramp with a softer slope down the garage. And we take away any stormwater element from getting on the ramp because that's covered. So all around, big, big improvement. South end of the property, Route 1 side of the property, you'll notice that the egress way along that is completely gone. We did shift the building right up to Route 1 and kind of change the configuration a little bit. Again, focusing on that buffer to the rail trail. And the building is pinned on the edge of the slopes with that mast DOT holds along that front edge. So we have it as far to the northeast as we can get it. And you'll see the distinct, there's a six foot wide pedestrian route along that Route 1 side that is separated from the highway with a tree belt and more landscaping between the walkway and the building and an open space amenity area on the south end of the property. Moving to the northerly end of the building, we reconfigured the parking emphasizing again more open space and separation to the rail trail. You'll see this 10 feet there from the parking to the rail trail. The parking space in this area will be all compact. So we're looking to maximize our compact space allow allowance under the zoning ordinance to minimize the pavement footprint of the building and maximize open space. You will also note on the north end of the property, the commercial ground level space is now its own building. And we did, I did add into that four dedicated parking spaces that would be preserved for that space. And then the other parking spaces, which would be tenant spaces in the evening hours, when they're not there, that obviously would also be open to tenant use of that commercial space. The Parker Street entrance has a direct route in the parking spaces nearest Parker Street that would be open to the public. So there's a sidewalk connection there. There's a sidewalk connection to the rail trail at the cul-de-sac turnaround and the direct route to the Hill Street lighted intersection crosswalk. It's eight foot wide directly to the rail trail. There has been some commentary to, to, to continue to fine tune that crossing over the cul-de-sac. So we will surely incorporate that into the plans, try and minimize that route. And then the third connection, again, at the retail space directly to the rail trail. So three connection points, the rail trail. I will note that we are preserving considerably more of the existing trees that are right on the boundary or within the property. Another big effort here with this adjustment. And from a technical aspect, we have all of the comments from Phil Christensen addressed in the technical design. We, we were holding on submitting that until hopefully we got some feedback from you tonight on this current design and incorporate any, anything we get back tonight into that final technical supplemental. But I've been in touch with Mr. Christensen. We've, we've also received comments back from the city engineer and other town staff, which were working into a technical response, which I hope to have ready for you as early as Friday morning. So that is still ongoing, but we're focusing more on the overall site, you know, how it's going to look at this point. And I'll pass this on to Bob Ulich to continue on with his, his portion of the presentation.
Thanks, Scott. I'm first going to show you the landscape planting plan and then I will show you an illustrative plan. My name is Bob Ulich. I lead the Landscape Architecture Studio within Ty &amp; Bond and I'm a 32 year resident in Newburyport. So pleased to be involved in, in the visioning of this project. As Joe mentioned, simplifying the, the site plan has allowed us to make a variety of upgrades, which have resulted in a much more user friendly and kind of spacious public realm around the entire site. We've reduced, as noted, the amount of impervious surfaces around the site from the roadway that we, that we used to have along Route 1 and the parking area south of the building. And we've done a number of other touches using permeable pavers that we'll talk about as well. So have tried to modify it, you know, both for public benefit and from a sustainability perspective. This, these modifications to the site plan have also resulted in a more unified plan, which as mentioned, we've now got three clear routes to Clipper City Rail Trail from the site. Some through the site, all our pathways are through the site. I just wanted to kind of reinforce that. You know, we've, we've done the grading, we've looked at it. So they're all ADA and Mass Architectural Access Board compliant. And we now have, also have three distinct publicly accessible open spaces. At the north end, we have tried to create a more generous open space around the commercial retail area, both for use by the public, you know, for people that come to this commercial retail tenant space so that they can be outside and that that space is visible and usable directly from the rail trail as one location. And then to the southeast, a courtyard called, and community green that is the gateway to Hill Street. And then a courtyard that is adjacent to the turnaround area in that what I'll call the southwest of the site. In addition to that, we've got a richly planted buffer that runs continuously along the entire property line that is coincidental with the Clipper City Rail Trail. So a little bit of an overview. Then we've widened the Clipper City Rail Trail path connections from six feet to eight street, eight feet as, as discussed previously. And the other walkways that are within the site more along the internal ones along Route 1 and such are gone from five feet to six feet. So they're a bit wider as well. As we, as requested by the city, we have refined the landscape plan to prioritize a series of existing plantings. And we've, you know, gone to greater lengths of notating those protections. Particularly, there's a grove of oak trees that we talked with the planning office about in which we've talked about putting construction fencing at the drip lines around those trees. And they exist as a kind of a darker, a shaded screening to the north of the parking lot and then to the west of the parking lot, which is north of the building. So it's probably about a half a dozen trees there. The ones look much darker north of the parking lot. And then there's ones that are lighter gray tone west of the parking lot. In addition, we've protected some sumac plantings, which are kind of in the area closer to Parker Street, about halfway between kind of the connector, the southern connector and Parker Street. There's a grove of sumacs there that it was desired to protect. So we're going to protect those. And we're also protecting construction again of the Alchemy against the, the Alchemy Garden area with fencing along those areas as well, being mindful of the value of those. The landscape that is established kind of along the property line, I want to talk a little bit about the background of that. It's, it's established over decades on both sides of the property line and that property line runs right down the middle of the swale, that low point that runs along the length of the property line. And it's really a remnant drainage swale from the prior rail use there. It's composed of a fair amount of volunteer and invasive plant species that have established over probably the past 50 plus years. And in some areas include debris that has settled because of this being a low point. As we've discussed with the city, we are proposing to remove the debris, mitigate the invasives that occur in the areas other than these plants that we're protecting. And then generous debris plant this entire length in naturalized drifts and groves with groupings of mixed deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs to reestablish an enhanced buffer from what we have right now. And our current plan proposes along this length, 50 to 60 new trees just along this property line and, and over 100 new shrubs along the entire length of the property line. We plan on reducing the density of the planting at the several crossings so that there's visual connections and glimpses through from, from the two sides of the site to ensure safety and also to kind of make it sure that it's inviting to people so that it's clear you can pass through, you're invited to pass through and not be kind of set apart from it. As discussed with the city, we're proposing to regrade some of the areas adjacent to the two Clipper City Rail Trail connections to make them a bit smoother and then, and also adjacent to the Alchemy Garden where there's a fair amount of kind of invasives that exist on that property line adjacent to the Alchemy Garden while accommodating and continuing to deal with and account for the site drainage there. And then we'll oversee those areas with where appropriate with lawn adjacent to the rail trail and with meadow mixes that are closer to the property line to reestablish a naturalized woodland edge. In addition, on focusing now, we could jumping over to the Route 1 side, just wanted to point out that we're planting approximately 35 ornamental trees along the Route 1 edge. And why ornamentals? Because we've got overhead utility lines there. So we're restricted in the type of trees that we plant along there. But that number of ornamentals will help kind of reduce the scale of the building as well as give a bit of a buffer between the residents there and, and Route 1 itself. So bit of a visual and physical separation. The entry from Parker Street also includes another dozen trees along its, its edge with the adjacent property owner. In total, the plan proposes over 100 new trees and a diverse array of other shrubs, ground covers and perennial plantings with species that we've identified kind of on this preliminary planting list, which once established will result in a low maintenance landscape, which is attractive year round. One other last thing I wanted to point out, it's in a little bit more detail on this plan and, and will be shown up on the illustratives, is we've tried to get in a bit more detail about breaking down the scale of the turnaround area. And if you're familiar with kind of what we've kind of used that Spofford Street roundabout as a bit of an inspiration, the idea of in the center of it where it's identified as P2, we're looking to use a lower planting in that area. And then permeable pavers in the area called L6 around it. There will be asphalt out beyond the curb line that's there, but those kind of those, again, at the center is planting around that, the band is permeable pavers. Again, to break down the scale of the, the drop off area. So it feels a bit more human in scale and for the pedestrian crossing as well. Right now, I'm going to just jump over to the illustrative plan, please. Okay, thank you. The smaller residential building again results in improved civic terrace space around the commercial retail building to accommodate users. I don't know if you can zoom that a little bit, Andy.
Yeah, just tell me where you'd like it.
Just up around the commercial retail building because we've provided some, on the kind of Route 1 side, we provided, I don't know if you can see it, but there's bar top kind of seating along that side with the idea that this will be kind of a commercial retail establishment. We put bike racks on that side as well as benches. And then on the side that's of the building that's closest to the rail trail, we've provided again picnic tables and some other seating. Again, for amenities for, for people that come to make that commercial retail space as successful and as, as viable as possible. And then we've modified the parking layout to reduce the impact on the existing trees to remain as discussed. And as Scott mentioned, we've used compact depth spaces. So we've been able to pull the, the edge of the parking lot further away from kind of the property line to allow greater opportunity for those trees to be protected and so forth and to break up the parking with trees so that the overall sense of that parking lot is less than what was previously shown. Then as you approach the kind of the, where the connection approaches the rail trail, we've got, those are kind of bench and kind of lounge chair seating elements around the crescent. Again, to be an inviting entry and for use by people on the rail trail. And as you go to the south, if you pan south on the site, relocating the garage entry. If you go like kind of near, yeah, right in that area. So you'll see the garage entry just adjacent to where the automobile going into the garage is. You can see the green roof and the extents of it over the area where the garage enters and goes down into grade. And that's, in addition to the green roof, it's allowed us to create a more usable and meaningful courtyard area to the upper right where the, where the, where you see the kind of ornamental trees. You can pan just a little bit towards Route 1 from there, Andy. So we've got some seating areas that are accessible by both people that are coming to visit folks in the live work units as well as to the general public in that, in that area. And as you can see, kind of by the diagram now here in the lower left, you could see kind of what we were talking about with the planting in the center, the permeable pavers around this, around the outside of the plantings, separating that drive aisle and making circulation much clearer. And when you approach the kind of pickup drop off area and parking garage on entry from Parker Street. And as you head kind of up towards Hill Street, you could see the, the pathway is again separated from the property line with a two foot buffer. We've tried to nudge it away from the property line so that we can put a new fence in there and we can put a little bit of planting to buffer the experience so that the path isn't right up against it. In the corner here, the elimination of what was previously parking and the kind of more circuitous route has allowed more direct connection. Using this connection has resulted in a community green, which we think, you know, given its location, there's not an entry to the building here. It's very much facing the corner. It is as much an invitation and inviting for the public that is walking through as it is for residents. The intent, as discussed with, with members of the planning board before, you know, we're thinking about this plaza incorporating permeable pavers at the center, ornamental trees and fieldstone walls that are around the perimeter to buffer users from Route 1 and provides a series of comfortable seating options in the center of the site. Again, as a way of inviting people in. These revisions, as I mentioned, result in an improved experience for those also along, along the whole south connector is because you'll remember the adjacencies previously were kind of on the southeast corner, there was a parking lot. And on the southwest corner was the entry to the parking garage. So these adjacencies to two publicly accessible open spaces, you know, makes this experience much better for the public and for the residents in this area. If you could pan back over to kind of the pickup drop off area, that would be appreciated. Thank you. You'll note the waste management kind of enclosure has been moved again closer to Parker Street away from, we try to be mindful of this kind of pedestrian crossing from the rail trail over to Hill Street. And we've also removed, there was a series of parking spaces on the rail trail side of this connector. We've removed those two so that this, you know, it's much more of a pedestrian focused with visibility wide open for people crossing at this location. And then just pan a little bit closer to the rail trail. Again, enhanced kind of crescent where people approach this connector with seating options. And, and we've highlighted a couple of new plantings that are on, on the other side of the rail trail. We had discussions when we were out on site that there's a bit of a landscape buffer between the woodworking and the, and the kind of red dust warehouse building to the west and the rail trail. But there's a, there tends to be a gap here. And so it was suggested that we provide some supplemental plantings in this area to kind of fill in that gap. So we've agreed to do that as well. And if you pan a little bit closer to Parker Street, we've moved the connector walk from the spaces that can be used for people coming to visit the rail trail just inside the Parker Street entrance. We've moved that away from the edge of Parker Street directly to the parking spaces as we think that's a, a safer connection and making people walk right along the edge of Parker Street. Next image, please. So we, we included a series of precedent images just to show you kind of our thoughts on materiality, kind of working from the upper left hand corner. The idea of where possible, using fieldstone walls, particularly along the Route 1 side and around the community green. Then the image to the right is showing you kind of a bit of a look and feel as to kind of what the permeable pavers around the roundabout that the drop off would look like and plantings inside of it, probably not a fieldstone wall at the center in case we have to have emergency vehicles jump that curb. But just to be a general idea, if you pan to the right a little bit, again, an image kind of of, you know, the kind of permeable unit pavers with gaps between them to allow stormwater to infiltrate. Again, to the right. Again, to the right, thinking maybe about a blended Type of unit paper, so there's a there's a mix of coloration In both the pedestrian and the vehicular areas to make it vibrant and also in vehicular areas to avoid Staining of from vehicle use being really highly prevalent. If you move to the right, again, the idea of going to put a louvered screening around the trash enclosure to hide it from from view. And then if you could go Kind of, you could probably pull out at this point a little bit, yeah, so wanted to show bike racks Which were including on site consistent with what we showed it in the same kind of ensemble of site furnishings that we had At one Boston Way and then site furnishings in terms of kind of benches and picnic tables and then to the right At number eight, kind of this idea of some high top Bar tops, maybe outside the commercial retail as kind of a You know, more appropriate to that kind of use and then we're introducing benches as well as some of these Sun lounger chairs on the right hand side at the connection with the rail trail. Then in terms of lighting that we're using, the lighting should be familiar to you, if you go out to one Boston Way, it's the similar kind of ensemble of fixtures. Parking lot cutoff lights, just like this, LED with warm LEDs For the kind of parking lot areas and then lower left, I believe, is kind of the pedestrian scale fixture That we used again at at one Boston Way and in some instances, depending upon whether we've got areas where we need to fill in light levels. We've introduced, we're going to introduce a baller type fixture and then we just have kind of standard planting details within that. Next, please. And just a quick overview of kind of this strategy for lighting in the north parking lot generally North of the commercial retail building is going to be parking lot lighting. There's one light adjacent to the rail trail and the commercial building, which is the kind of more pedestrian pole mounted light. Then all along Route One, you'll see the ones that are circled and then wrapping the Hill Street kind of connector, all those are pedestrian pole lights. And then we have back to kind of more parking lot lights from the Parker Street entry to the turnaround area. And then pole lights around in the pedestrian environment and all these complement kind of lights that are at the building entry and the garage entries as well. Next, please. Now I'm going to turn it over to Joe to review the building features and modifications.
Thanks, Bob. So this is the updated diagram of the building organization of the entire building. Updated to the shorter building and the added floor on the south side, we're still keeping the same concept of two buildings in this case now there. Two buildings at roughly just over twelve thousand square foot footprints each with a connector where in the center that we call the hinge. That has primarily most of the amenity features on all floors, including the lobby At the ground floor. We have moved one of those amenity pieces that used to be in the center off to the southern portion. You can see that little blue amenity area at the, I'm sorry, at the very northern end of the building, far off to the left. And it's associated roof deck, so at the northern end, we still have Some semblance of a three story building as you approach it from Newbury Port, you'll see Kind of a lower scaled building as you come by. The commercial retail building has been, as stated before, pulled off on its own, so it has its own unique identity and More of a chance to survive as a retail component. Next slide. This is just a view from the other angle, the same diagram showing that link in the center and the two building concept. Showing here how it bends away from Route One to sort of Reinforce that curve as you come down Newbury Port Turnpike and how it opens up towards the Clipper City Rail Trail area. And I think pulling the retail space away and out of the building was also kind of a A key thing in this redesign. Shortening that building allowed us that additional space to be able to do that, and I think some of the images of the renderings will Will show how this has much more of a chance to succeed as a retail component. Next slide. An overview of the floor plans From basement all the way through the fourth floor. And you can see on the first floor that retail component is off on its own. On the fourth floor. You can see that the the So this is the typical floor, like the third floor, we still have that Amenity component in the center where the hinges facing the rail trail. We have filled in the the uppermost portion of that wedge with some build with some of the units To make up for some of the units that we had lost by compressing the building on both ends. And then on the fourth floor, if you pan up one, please. You can see that the amenity space on the fourth floor has shifted to the far northern left side of the building. And there's still an outdoor fourth floor Amenity deck associated with that so that It faces down towards the rail trail, we think that lounge area have kind of a nice Glow like a beacon actually when you're coming in From Newbury Port and you can see that that glow of that glassy element up on the on the fourth floor. Next slide. These are just slides of each one of the floor plans, starting with basement, showing the new configuration of the ramp as you come down. It's Much easier to get down and make that turn right or left as you come into the parking area As opposed to the way it was previously. The first floor plan showing the ramp and The green roof on top of that. The gym is open to the a little Outdoor terrace there between the ramp and the gym. Where there used to be a pool there previously, so we took that away and still decided to keep it as an outdoor terrace. The retail component on the far left, you can see is pulled away from the building and there's a small rain garden in between the retail area Building itself, the retail building as Bob and Scott pointed out is surrounded by an outdoor terrace with plenty of seating And connections to the rail trail as well as connections to the new sidewalk on the report turnpike side, turnpike side. Each one of the units has its own small, small terrace On the ground floor. And we also have at this level Two live work units that are now open to the courtyard side near the building entry as opposed to on the Turnpike side, that was another good comment that we picked up on from the planning committee. It's more accessible on this side, easier to get to, there's parking available for those live work units. So next slide. Just moving up the building to the second floor, showing the second floor terrace above the main lobby And lounge and amenity areas that face that area. We have, as noted previously, twenty three affordable units that are Dispersed evenly across all four floors. Next slide. The third floor, which we've seen. And then the fourth floor, next slide. And then the roof plan. And we still are planning on including Solar panels on the south portion of the roof. Depending on where the MEP systems land, we were Proposing to save some space for for solar panels up on the roof there. Next slide. Some inspirational images that you've seen before about how we plan to treat the building mass with setbacks. Bay windows, different materials, next slide. Materials that you've seen before, combination of brick, wood, look and Reinforced cement panels. Next slide. Some of those pictures of the actual samples, which I believe you still have in your office, so hopefully you had a chance to Re-familiarize yourself with those. Next slide. Exonometric view facing the rail trail. Showing the new elevations and the treatments, we're using the same kind of language as we did previously. Except now we have that additional fourth floor on the north side. You know, each building, the sou- southern building is treated slightly differently than the north, but similar materials, just maybe Different colors and different textures. Next slide. And Looking from the Route One side, also the new retail space down on the bottom right hand corner, we kind of saw that as a Like a garden shed or a Little greenhouse of some sort, that could be kind of a a nice little jewel when viewed up against the the building itself. Also showing the Juliet balconies that face the Route One side, on the other side, we have full balconies. Next slide. Overall elevations, the west elevation on the upper side showing Primarily brick on the left and then on the right hand side. Primarily brick on the base and then wood and wood look type elements interspersed Throughout to help break up the elevations on both sides with Parapets that kind of step up and down to help also reduce the the overall length of the building. And in the center, we're still treating that many area as more of a glassy hinge type connector on on both The west and the east elevations. Next slide. The end elevations on the north. The upper one showing the building itself and then the lower one showing the little retail Shed component. And then the south elevation showing primarily the the wood elements there. Next slide. Section through the northern building now showing it as a four story building with parking Below and then a section through the ramp. In between the ramp and the building is that small Outdoor terrace right off the lobby and the gymnasium with the with the second floor Outdoor deck. The sloped area of the ramp covering is proposed to be a green as mentioned previously. Next slide. And then the renderings, this one showing the connection to the rail trail. Also showing some of the ins and outs that we're doing a lot of the elevation to help break up the overall mass Of the building in the foreground, you can see there's that little jog that happens in between the the Warm wood areas and then On the northern side, the upper floor sort of steps back a little bit and the brick pops up in other areas Just to help break up the overall mass of the building. You can see the entrance to the parking ramp on the left, the connection to the rail trail As well as the connection to Hill Street all the way across. Moving that parking ramp was a key Key design aspect of clearing up this whole courtyard area, making it much more Open feeling or pedestrian and bicycle friendly and so that was another good suggestion that we capitalized on in in this redesign. Next slide. Looking at the View of the building from the rail trail as you come into the lobby there foreground and the upper level Amenity deck at the second floor With bench seating as Bob had pointed out and some of the new plantings to help preserve that Feeling of privacy both between the building and the rail trail. Next slide. This is the community space with the fieldstone walls in that circular area with bench seating as well. The connection to Hill Street is right behind us and then you see the pedestrian path In front of us, six feet wide and then the eight foot wide one on the left hand side. Some screening for the building and then as you move down Route One, there's screening all along that. Little bit of buffer and ornamental trees all the way down to the the north parking lot and An extension of the fieldstone walls in some areas all the way down as well. Next slide. Review coming from Newbury Port, you can see that little beacon of amenity space up at the top. And then the bay windows that kind of march along the north building all the way down. The variety of materials and textures that we're trying to get to keep this building looking lively and varied. Some of the Juliet balconies that you can see along this edge. And then just sort of the activity that we anticipate with people moving up and down this area. Primarily to get to that retail place that we think will become kind of a Destination location for some of the bikers and people using this The rail trail both to commute and for recreation. And then that Little roof deck up on top that has kind of an overlook down to the rail trail And the retail area to try to create kind of a nexus Between all the things that are going on there, an opportunity for a food truck as well in that area. Next slide. And then finally, the slide, the slide is the view from the the rail trail Looking towards the retail area, the amenity space up up above and again, the sec- the fourth floor roof deck And all that activity that we anticipate happening in this area. And I think that's the last slide. But I do want to reiterate that, you know, squeezing that building down was a was a key Suggestion that we really appreciate and It was kind of a domino effect that led to all these other movements all over the site, so I think it was a key suggestion and a good one, so thank you for that.
I'd like to say thank you for your responsiveness to all of our feedback, I'm glad we could be helpful to you so that you could be helpful to us, so This is a very good Start or actually moving quite far along from where we were before. Before we get into any discussion with the planning board, I'd like to call for public comment, this is a public hearing. And then we'll have all the information we need to move forward with the detailed discussion, so Andy, could you open it for a public comment, please?
Thanks Chair, so if you have any interesting comment, then just raise your hand using Zoom's feature, the hand button. That we do have, it looks like one caller, I believe you can press star nine to raise your hand If you're interested. Not seeing any takers, Chair.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and move back into discussion as we did the last time. I think it might be more Easy for all of us if we try to go through the staff report as an agenda And comment as we go, obviously, we'll start jumping around as as people have Comments that lead us to other sections, but this might be a good way to get started. There was a request for dimensional waivers And we had discussed one of them already and felt it was okay, the maximum front yard setback Waiver to increase this to from ten to fifteen feet. There's also a request for a waiver for the There is a reduction in the overall footprint, but it's still quite significant. And I'm wondering if anyone has any concerns about that waiver. So we can, yeah, Bob?
Well, I Yeah, I think I think we should talk about footprint. I I would also like to talk about the setback along along Route One. And and it's not so much about Dimension As it is The The character of that frontage of the building and, you know, I Chair, if you if you want to go through the staff reports first and and I'll reserve comments.
Yeah, I On track.
But but so I, I'll just hold off and but I think there are a few things to talk about there.
Okay, and so we may, we may return to these waivers later because we're not going to vote on them now anyway, we're just gonna Give a sense to the applicant that we're, they're headed in the right direction on them. So if there there are no major concerns About the The actual footprint, but more about the design, we'll move on to those as we get to them in the staff report. There is the third waiver, I just want to raise it for consideration and we can move on. Having to do with a waiver requested to allow no facade at the front. Having to do with a waiver requested to allow no facade at the front line on route one and a new pedestrian sidewalk constructed there for just pedestrian use. And that fits into what Bob wants to talk about, I'm sure, on on how that will work. So let's move on to.
Excuse me, Bonnie?
Yes.
I just want to go back a section. This isn't, this isn't this waivers, but this relates to the submission waivers. There is a comment in the in the staff report that Minko comments that the signage plan details will be submitted when the site plan is approved. And I was looking at the minutes of the meeting and the motion was that all of these things would be provided before approval. So I just want to make make it clear that 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 comment is not in not consistent with our vote.
So it's before approval?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be.
This is Andy, could I comment on that as well?
Oh, sure.
So I believe Caitlin had been, I think, conveying some of what the applicant had understood from the meeting and requested there perhaps with some of their language, but I just as Rick mentioned, I understand that to mean, at least as I've spoken to Minko's team about this, it seems to me what they're referring to is the sort of straw poll agreement on the or vote on the layout of the site plan. At which point they would provide remaining details for things like that. So I guess maybe Minko could perhaps clarify, but I think what they mean is exactly what Rick's talking about, and that is consistent with what the board discussed last time, which is submitting that perhaps after, you know, consensus on the the layout of the site, but certainly prior to the approval and part of it.
Yeah, that that makes a whole lot of sense, and I don't think there's any problem with that. So that's just the wording here that has to be adapted to what we voted on last time, which is before the final approval. Okay. It is hard to follow the staff report. Let's, you know what? I'm going to change my mind. We're going to talk about whatever we want to talk about and we'll go back and use the staff report as a check to make sure that we've covered everything. How's that? And then it's more organic and we can build on each other's ideas. So Bob, why don't you get started?
Okay. Just I can start with just the overall site plan and and I would echo some of the the comments that that I think there's a lot of progress here. You know, enough progress that that you can really start to see the the potential of this site as as an anchor at the at the north end of of this smart growth district. I I would say though, and and I feel pretty strongly about this, that that this building needs to have two distinctly different frontages. One, one is the the zone that faces generally south that faces the rest of the smart growth district that faces the train station. That's where there is a potential for synergies and and with a with a site like this. My point of view is it's it's always best to bring all of the activity generators, all of the elements together in a way that that really creates a kind of you know, viable urban space that 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 has a mix of uses. So there there are synergies here that include pedestrians that include live work units that could potentially include retail. It's the arrival point for the building. So so I would encourage you when when fine tuning this to try to make that plaza area on the south side of the building as large as you can make it. Because that's where all of the potential is to make this more than just a multifamily residential development. It's where you have the potential to really feel live work and potentially retail and and, you know, other activities. And where the the rail trail activity kind of crosses the site. So I would really put all of your eggs in that basket and and really emphasize the south side of the building. Just the opposite for me is is the route run frontage, which I do not see as a pedestrian environment at all, because there's no place for people to go up there. If you get beyond this site to the north, there's no place to go. And if you get beyond the site to the south, there's really no place to go other than to connect to the rail trail connectors. So I would encourage you to look at that zone as more of a buffer. Because those units at grade right along route one need a buffer between them and the traffic. I like the idea of the fieldstone walls that were being talked about. I wonder if that can be kind of taken advantage of along that frontage to create more of a buffer, but and unless there's some compelling reason on the regulatory side that that a sidewalk needs to be there, I I don't think it's doing much for you. I think you could emphasize again, the connection from the rail trail that that exists to the south of the building because that crosses that plaza again, where where you could create a lot of activity. And lastly, and and then we can kind of move on to other points to discuss that the retail. I honestly, I don't understand what that can possibly be. It's the the rail trail does not generate enough foot traffic to create a market for a viable retail space that's 12 months out of the year. It's not big enough that it's a destination for people to drive to. And quite honestly, it's it's at the wrong end of the site to take advantage of all of those other things that I was talking about. So I I applaud the idea of retail as a use on the site. And I think if you could make it work, and I also think the comment about food trucks is a terrific idea. But I think it's at the wrong end of the site. I think it it again, needs to be back to the the southern end of the site where you know, all of the 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 activity is mixing and and I would acknowledge that that all of that's really only possible if you've made that a little bit bigger. And I think you got to push the building around a little bit more in order to do that. But I I think you've moved the plan a long way from from the last time we looked at this and you can really start to see these pieces coming together. But I don't think you're quite there yet.
Great, thank you. Let's stick with those ideas to see if there's anything else that someone would like to build off of that before we move on to other details.
Yeah, Bonnie, I'll try first. I guess I had a couple of questions and and they were really similar. One was a bit more detailed with respect to hours of the retail space and how that was going to be doubling up with parking space. They really didn't understand that in the hours of operation. Which really dovetails into some of Bob's points about what is the point, you know, and I couldn't agree with when I first heard the food truck even thought of myself, well, want to have space for several food trucks and obviously they're seasonal during when it's warm versus, you know, the middle of winter. And you know, going to the point about the rail trail. I would even ask again, you can only do so many things with this space and I personally would not care. Again, if even if it wasn't moved to stay there, you you forego that retail space, whatever reason, then to to me, I wouldn't care whether it was just one connection to the rail trail. Now, all of you may may not, because I don't see the the point of having two connections, especially I think that connection was made quote unquote, to get access to the rail trail, access to the retail space. And I'm not sure I if it's not there, I'm not sure I really understand it.
Okay, great, thanks. Would anyone else like to join this part of the conversation?
I will.
Okay, Rick.
So kind of building off what Bob was saying about the the buffer on the route one side. I can see that the the development needs that sidewalk only to get people really from the parking lot to that entrance of the building because there's no, because of the the squeezing and the and the entry to the underground parking on the rail trail side, there's no direct connection. So I don't think they can lose that sidewalk, although I agree that it doesn't really go anywhere to the north from there. I was looking at the 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 site plan, I guess C three one which shows the area between the sidewalk and the road being labeled a six foot tree belt. But none of the landscaping plans show any trees there. And I guess I I feel I I was just wondering whether it's possible to shift that sidewalk closer to the building and kind of flip the trees onto the roadside because the trees that are that are shown on the landscape plan are they're just labeled parking lot, parking lot trees. They're not really identified otherwise, but they only have about 12 feet of space, I think, to grow between the building and the edge of the pavement, the sidewalk pavement. So I was wondering whether it'd be possible to get bigger trees and hence more of a buffer to the building and also more of a parkway feel along route one. If a tree belt could be made wider and could actually be a tree belt instead of it's actually shown on the landscape plan as sod and seeded lawn. So it's it it really isn't providing any buffer at all at that point. That was just that whole area there. It's it's difficult and I and I and you know, Bob was talking about could the building be moved? I think Bob was talking about could the building be moved closer to the street, but I think it can't because of that mast dot slope easement. I think the building is is right up against that slope easement. So I think the building is as close to the turnpike as it can be. But if it were possible to move the sidewalk closer to the building and put the trees on the street side of the sidewalk, you might get bigger trees, more of a buffer, kind of soften the whole experience for the people who are living in the building as well as for the drivers going down, going down there. So that's just one whole bunch of issues relating to the the buffering and the landscaping on that side of the building. I think the on the other side of the building in the alchemical garden area, I don't think that they caught the fact that there is alchemical garden on both sides of the pathway, the current pathway in the Haley's. And they're showing elimination of some of the alchemical garden garden landscaping features and replacing it with again, sod and seeded lawn. So that's another area where there's kind of a disconnect between existing conditions and the plan. And also, when you look at the the renderings, the I think it's A five oh one showed basically the alchemical garden is completely gone. So I think and that I know that's probably done by somebody different than than tie and bond. But it's it's it just kind of doesn't match what's shown here on the landscaping plan. I want to make sure that we're we're clear about what is happening with the landscaping there. And I guess oh, the other thing is the the A five oh six also shows suggests that the pathway that cuts across the traffic circle has a different paving. It looks like that in the concept here. It looks like it's paint. So I think we're going to talk more about that sidewalk, that crosswalk and and how that's laid out later on. But I just want to just note that that disconnect there. And and I guess finally, just like hope that when we have a, I know this whole plan set is just labeled concept plan, so it's not meant to be a detailed site plan. But when we get to that point, we hope that the preliminary planting list and the site and the landscaping plan would actually identify, be more specific than than just saying parking lot tree and would actually list the the numbers of the trees by the number of trees in this in this preliminary planting list table.
Okay, Heather. Thanks, Rick.
Um, so I have a few overlapping thoughts. The sidewalk on Newburyport Turnpike in this rendition and in the previous meeting made me uncomfortable. I am very familiar with this. I walked through that opening from the rail trail through the parking lot and I used that crosswalk on route one. And if I look to my left, I would not want to be walking on that curve. It just doesn't seem like something that would be inviting. So my question is, when you go into the garage, is there an internal access way in that middle lobby that could sort of alleviate that front sidewalk? In other words, could they go through the building and out through the front have something tighter to the front for them to access those front doors? That'd be one of my questions. And another question I have is on parking, which I had in a previous meeting too. And I've read all of the spots in the per studio and the per one bedroom. But my question is over by the residential, are those part of the parking spaces that are also meant to be used by the residential? So are they an overlapping use? And how how is that to be really known that that would work well? In other words, if everybody, you know, was people are working from home now more, so there's less less coming and going, let's say, and depending what that retail space is, would they be occupying throughout the day spaces that really were allocated for residential? Or is it a different completely designation?
Um, this is, yes, I apologize for interjecting. This is Andy through the chair. I I noticed that Scott Cameron, civil engineer for the applicant is raising hand and I was wondering just myself, just given the number of comments, if if it makes sense to have the applicant respond to some of them as we go or but.
That's exactly what I was about to do, Andy. Thank you. Yeah, Scott, why don't you pick up with these comments? We'll get back to other planning board members on this and other issues, but I think we do have an awful lot of information out here and some questions that I'd like you to respond to. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andy. Regarding the use of the parking spaces, the five nearest Parker Street are intended to be accommodating to public parking for access to the rail trail, as are the four in the north end of the building facing the building for the the retail space. Now, as far as how that is, I guess enforced, this would be obviously, the resident parking would would get the priority. We picked those spaces at Parker Street to the furthest away from the building. They will likely be the last filled by residents and they will also likely be assigned with numbers. Especially the North Lily parking area. As far as how we manage that, you know, signage, it's signage and there's a there's a various different options. We we want to avoid public people parking there overnight. So likely there might be a like a time, a time limit resident parking six P to six A or something like that. But that's all something we can work out with signage. Regarding the sidewalk, we do have door entry points along that route. We need them for building code. I'll let Joe speak a little bit to that if he feels the need, but the sidewalk along route one. We're dealing with a lot of, you know, again, these are, these are a lot of the challenges we faced on the other properties. One of the one of the occurrences with a lot of this real estate is the overhead wire component. And it I hate, I hate to say we're driving design with that, but we are driving design, but we we tried so hard to move wires on the other projects and it just doesn't happen. And we have on route one here, the same situation with this overhead wires running along the frontage of the property along along the building. So we don't really have the ability to put any large trees there. Which is why that's shown as grass between the sidewalk and route one. We're also keep in mind, working with Mass DOT on the frontage improvements. While I think we can, we could possibly look at eliminating that sidewalk. We did receive a comment back from Mass DOT that actually wanted extended across the entire frontage. This may be part of their long term planning. And they actually wanted it closer to the highway. So we're trying to manage that. We still have some work to do with the discussions with Mass DOT, but right now we feel, you know, the walkway is is we need to plan for that and address the landscaping accordingly along that frontage. I think that's all I had. I don't know if Bob or Joe wanted to trip in.
Just just a comment. Yes, we do have two stairs that empty out onto that sidewalk along one as well as that lobby in the center. So that's part of the reason why those sidewalks are there. And you know, if you want to walk out the lobby and take a walk down to the retail district to the south, that's one place where you would you you could do it. You could walk along that sidewalk down there. I walked that area myself and I didn't feel like the cars were traveling that fast. And I think that to me, with the improvements that we have planned with curbs and, you know, those stone walls, it will be become much safer for people to walk along that area.
I was just going to add, so relative, just reiterating what Scott had mentioned. I was just going to add, so relative, just reiterating what Scott had mentioned, the ornamental trees was more both not putting large trees there, both because of the kind of horizontal dimensions we were dealing with, as well as the overhead line dimensions. If we tried to put in canopy trees, I'm sure they would get rejected from Mass DOT relative and utility companies for the overhead wires. We also had kind of, in terms of having the cross section, the idea was, you know, given that there's the vehicular traffic along Route one, we wanted to set back the the walkway so that there was a buffer between it and the road. We didn't want the walk right along the curb line. So from a planting perspective, the kind of thinking was, we were going to plant between the sidewalk and the curb line with something that was like, kind of a more of an ornamental grass, is something that was more herbaceous, meaning not like a woody plantings, because that area is going to get a lot of use and abuse from snow and salt and so forth. Whereas we were putting the more lush plantings between the sidewalk then and the building to create the buffer there. So if that makes any sense, you know, if you can think about it sectionally, like something that's a little bit more rugged, rough along the road edge and then inboard from the sidewalk would have more lush plantings.
I think just, just to comment on that if I can for a second, I, you know, I I I hear the comments about the limitations and understand the egress requirements. But but I still do not think that 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 is a sidewalk that is going to be a pleasant pedestrian environment that people will just want to go out and and, you know, walk down the street on. This is not an urban environment. This, the Route one environment is is about traffic. And it's it's moving relatively quickly through there. So it's just not a pleasant environment. And if there was a way that you could address the egress requirements possibly by, you know, exiting the building and moving north out of the north stair, exiting the building, moving south out of the south stair. I don't know if the middle connection is is part of your egress scenario or not. But if there was a way of minimizing that, and and again, getting back to dealing with this as as a landscape buffer, so that those units on the ground floor do not feel like they're right out on Route one. I think that's worth talking about. And I I I hear what Rick is saying, and maybe I'm not completely understanding the mast dot requirements along here, but is is the building right at the limit of where it can be?
Uh, this is Scott Cameron through the chair.
Yes.
So the easement is only one factor. And yes, we do have the building pinned right up against it. It is a variable width easement. The other challenge is simply the constructability. The southerly end of the building closest to Route one, only ten feet from the highway. We already have some challenges there with slope backs and probably require some sheet piling in order to construct the foundation below the highway grade. So even given an opportunity maybe to move it closer, it really isn't practical.
Thinking more about the middle. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm thinking more about at the middle of the building, not not at the end.
Yeah, can you see the the easement? That that is why that shape is there. So we are fitting this around that easement. I don't know, Andy, if you can highlight it. It looks like a it looks like a V. It juts out, almost like a nose facing at the building. That's out twenty feet.
Yep, yeah, I see it. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I see Karen's got her hand up. Did you want to contribute on your side?
Uh, yes, this is Lumen Akuchi with Karen. We're at One Computer and that's why her name popped up. First of all, I'd like to thank the the board for all their time involved with reviewing our project. I wanted to just make a very brief comment on the retail. I'm personally felt, and I might have read this incorrectly. I know that it was important to have a retail component. And so this is one of our our options and having talked to some of the staff members, it seemed like this would be a retail component that would service the rail trail. But I've always been concerned that there would really ever be a viable retail location possible on this site. So I I would have no qualms about getting rid of this particular retail location and this building and maybe taking Mr. Coop's advice and trying to see if we can consolidate it more to the middle of or near the lobby area. But I I see that if we do that, that retail component would be more of a service to the residents of Newburyport Crossing. I don't see it relying a lot on on the general public. Now, maybe there may be some people off of the rail trail that could come there. And I think we'd have to think through how we could make that that possible. But I would, if if the general consensus is that that retail is an inappropriate location, I think we'd be fine with you know, relocating it. In terms of the sidewalk, I'm I'm happy to eliminate the sidewalk. Frankly, I think this is a DOT kind of requirement that put on us and maybe we're trying to force it in there. I I kind of agree. I've walked this area a lot. You never really truly feel safe along that sidewalk, but I would be for eliminating that as well, if if we can do it and satisfy the DOT at the same time.
Okay, let me just comment on the retail. That's part of the mixed use that's required for Smart Growth District. And while it may not be in the right location, it contributes to the requirement of the district. And to live workspaces don't do it on their own. So we had talked about, I think initially you did have it at the center of the building, but very close to a connection to the rail trail. And that it could be different uses at different times of the year. So it would be ice cream in the summer and bicycle rentals and or repairs. And then in the winter, it could be more of a cafe, you know, focusing more on warm foods and a place to hang out. So I think we need to keep some kind of retail commercial in this project. It's just a question of where it fits and where it would work. And that would be my vote on it. And I I think we should seriously consider integrating it.
Well, if 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 that, if having a retail component is a very important aspect of the project and to allow the general public to be able to access it, because that would help support whatever ventures go into this building, its current location gives it the best shot. Because not only do you have the people at at the Newburyport Crossing development, the three buildings, but you have people from the rail trail and you have people that are passing by in their automobiles. And I had thought very quickly, I've spoken to a coffee shop person on Pleasant Street who currently delivers coffee and pastry to One Boston Way and spoke to her about maybe opening this location in the morning, say from seven in the morning till eleven. And she would have basically coffee, muffins, pastry that she would bake off-site and bring it here and have somebody operate this in the morning. And I can see somebody, because this is like an AM side of the road. You have AM side of the roads and PM side of the road. AM sides of the roads are really good for coffee. So I can see somebody as they're leaving the Newbury downtown, Newburyport to make their way south on Route one, pulling in here, grabbing a cup of coffee and a muffin and taking off. And then at eleven o'clock, I saw the possibility of saying, having an ice cream operation there. So there would be some minimal space that the ice cream would be stored, but then it could be operated as an ice cream shop that would, that that may also sell salads and sandwiches for lunchtime and then could open state, extend their hours for the rail trail people who drive by in their bikes with water and possibly we'd put like an air compressor there so people that could fill their air tires and have some repair equipment available to bikers. And then I thought in the wintertime, people could have, you know, maybe the Rotary Club sells Christmas trees here. You know, you have the coffee and pastry in the morning and then you have Edison Fairs for Christmas where you sell different kinds of commercial goods during the Christmas season. Haley's used to do that. Mrs. Strong had a Roy rather, Mrs. Roy had a an alpaca farm and she used to sell scarves and hats and things like that. So I see that this location with a multiple uses that can attract people from the rail trail, people driving on on Route one and the people from our building would make this a potential successful location. And so that that is why if we're going to try to truly do a retail, I'm not convinced that anything will truly work. But that was my thought process of having multiple businesses and users occupying the space at different times of the day to give them a shot. And I I envisioned that I would charge very little rent for this location to make viability work. So if this were a normal business that, I I mean, I I pro farmed this for less than fifty percent of what I would really need to get or what a market rate would be in order to support the possibility of it being a viable location.
Thanks very much. It gives us a good picture of that, what you envisioned for that. Was there anyone else on the applicant side who wanted to speak to the issues that are on the table before I go back to the planning board? Okay, I've got lots of hands up. I think I saw Rick first. Go for it.
Thanks. I'm just going back, continuing this discussion of the retail space. I think that we originally said we wanted the retail space to be right by the circle, adjacent to the lobby, because that made most sense in terms of a, in terms of the community, basically, you know, that's about where you'd park your bike right now to go to Haley's. And, you know, Haley's draws a lot of of walk-in traffic, especially during the warmer months, but even in the spring and fall. So I I think that is, you know, it would make a lot of sense to replicate that. And also to Bob's point about the fact that this would be more of a focal point for the three buildings in Newbury, Newburyport Crossing, that it would be be more convenient, be more central, it would help to create a sense of community, I think. I was, I have been willing to accept the idea of the retail space on the north end, even though I don't think it is as good a location. We have to have a retail space. I don't, I don't, I'm not really sure that the idea of shuffling businesses through over the course of a day is going to make for a very robust center that somebody can predict predictably find what they want. I'm definitely not sure that you want to have people coming in for coffee in the morning. I've seen many Dunkin' Donuts off roads that are much less trafficked than Newburyport Turnpike and they create awful backups from entering and exiting at rush hour. So I I don't think you really want to target it to that road user. I think you want to target it to the residents of your projects, of your developments and to the people who are going to the train station, who are going by for recreation and so forth. I think that it's it, you really have to think of a more robust commercial use than just kind of a pop-up thing where different businesses come through at different parts, times of the day. You know, we really want to have the part of the zoning call for mixed use and kind of gave you a pass on the first two buildings by saying that the work qualified as mixed use, but it really isn't the same thing. And it really needs to be a really good effort to to make a successful, a space for a successful business. And as I say, I think Haley's has has done it in the past. They'll be losing the drive-in business, but they'll be getting hundreds of dwelling units that will be able to take advantage of it. So I think it's a stronger position for a business than Haley's has right now.
Okay, move on to Don.
Yes, just a couple of thoughts on this. First, with respect to Route one, if we looked into the future, I do believe there there's a plan or a goal to have the traffic circle one lane. I think somewhere around this general area goes from two lanes to one lane. So I suspect even though I'm not a fan of Route one, that there'll be some incremental calming in in this area. Not that I would would discount any of the comments made by all of us regarding Route one, and it's not necessarily a place one we want, would want to hang out. Secondly, going back to the retail and, you know, again, we said we did the work study for Boston, Boston Way. What I'm trying to understand, do we have the right, Bonnie? I'm not saying we want to, I want to understand, do we have the right to provide a waiver to not have retail here? Or is that, or is that, we cannot do that? Again, I'm not saying we want to exercise it. I want to understand, do we have that option? Because to me, if if in spite of what we all think, if if the applicant who's done market studies, et cetera, is compared to what we think, says this is not viable and in turn, that space is not there and and consequently, that space is transformed into something else, whether it's more green space or something else that the board thinks is beneficial, then, you know, that's a trade-off we have to make. So again, I'm just trying to understand, Bonnie, do we even have that optionality?
My understanding is that it is an integral part of a smart growth district. We're trying to commit, we want them to create a community where people can live and work. That doesn't mean that outsiders can't pass through. But we are not producing an apartment, apartment buildings here. So we want some sort of activated spaces during the day. And we did allow only live workspaces in the other two buildings. And now that we're going to have a third one and wanting to create both the applicant and we, a community here, I think we should think long and hard before we eliminate retail.
Bonnie, and I understand all those points there, I guess, but I'm still a bit confused. And and I hear what you're saying, please, I do. But if we so decide, do we have the option to not have it? That's all I'm I'm saying. I'm not saying we want to. I'm not saying it's right, but do we, it's an easy question. If we can't do it, then then it's off the table. That's what I'm trying to say.
This is Andy. Could I respond?
Yeah.
So the the board does have some latitude under the ordinance to do that. To Don's, you know, specific technical question, but I would also agree with the comments that have been made thus far. We have worked with Minko for several projects already and we have talked about the importance in the Smart Growth District of having a mix of uses as opposed to being just a complex of residences. So I I understood obviously the concerns when One Boston Way happened, but I tend to agree that we have sort of a fiduciary duty, if you will, to encourage a mix of uses here. And of course, there could be, you know, endless debate over the particulars, but but I do think it's important to try to keep that component in here. It wasn't necessarily that staff felt that was the exact location it should be in. I tended to agree with a comment that Bob had made earlier that, you know, it'd be preferable to have it sort of at the core of the building or closer to the train station, for instance, on the site. But on the whole, I would be pleased to have this activated use there next to the rail trail. I do think it can be a viable location. And I do think it adds something to the district and to the site that if you, if you only approve residential units or only residential with live work units, that may or may not become, you know, sort of vibrant, you know, forward-facing businesses. It that may not be the the true transit-oriented development, mixed-use district that, you know, we had brought forward here.
No, thanks. I don't disagree. I'm just trying to understand what is the exact legal or regulatory right. So thank you.
Let's go on to Heather. Your hand is still up and I don't know if it's from before or if it's a new comment.
No, I did the right thing. I took it down and put it back up. So I'm on the retail space too right now. And one of my thoughts, and I'm understanding now that this is something that we have to have in here. And I feel like it's a lot to put on to the residents to support this retail space, whatever it may be, in its near entirety. And I feel like that's what would happen if you move it closer to that inside circle. Whereas in fairness to whoever it is who's trying to operate a business, I feel like the greatest exposure would be to stay right where it is, actually on Route one for signage, visibility, just for ease of, you know, people finding them. And then perhaps tying it to the to the building better through some sort of an organic walkway. And then perhaps tying it to the, to the building better through some sort of an organic walkway that goes along the garage entrance behind and and over, you know, something that's more inviting. But I feel like to push it further into this neighborhood isn't as fair to whoever it is that's taking a chance on their business. I think that they should have more exposure and be out by Route One like that one is.
Thank you. Okay, Bob, you've been patient. Thank you.
Hard for me to be patient, so.
I'm helping you.
I do. I, you know, the, the comments that were made about the, the types of business, I think we're, we're right on the mark. And I think, I think something like this requires some real creativity. And it becomes a kind of pavilion that can accommodate, you know, a lot of different things seasonally. I, I think relative to Heather's comments in terms of visibility from Route One, I just, I don't think there's enough of it to really become a destination along Route One. And there's really not enough parking to support that. So it's, it's not, you know, a Dunkin' Donuts or a franchise of some sort where, where it has that visibility and that signage. I don't think that's what this is really. But it, it could be something that, that consistent with the earlier comments could be something that, that really becomes an interesting component of this public space to the south of the building. And, you know, if, if this is about the district and, and about creating pedestrian activity, it's on the south side of the building. And, and I think you, you give up the visibility from Route One. But, but you connect to the rail trail, you connect to, to the other residential projects. And, and I think maybe there's a way of making that work. I also think if you move it from the north, you might be able to somehow shift this whole residential block a little bit to the north and solve some of the, the proximity issues at the, at the south end of the residential block where it starts to get a little close to Route One. So I think there's a benefit there as well that that might be worth looking at. I, I will say relative to the parking on the north side, I'm not sure I, I understand why that's there. If that's intended to satisfy part of the residential parking program. And I think you've got the numbers, maybe without that, we should talk about that also. It's so remote from, from the main entrances to the building. I would almost expect there to be a stronger entrance point at the north end of the residential block so that I could actually park there and walk immediately into the building and not have to walk down the sidewalk along Route One to get to the middle of the building to get in. It just, it's, I'm not sure why it's there to begin with. And if the retail moved to the south, I just, I, I'd like to hear from the design team about, about what the real function of that is, if it's satisfying parking program, or if you really see that as a benefit more broadly to the, to the project.
Okay, let's move to parking and to circulation with that comment. And could someone on the applicant team please comment on that parking up there? If it's anything other than, well, it obviously is supporting the retail.
Lou, do you want to take that question? This is your circle.
Yeah, yes, I've raised, I don't, can you hear me? I raised my hand.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We, we currently did a parking survey at one Boston Way. And we have 1.45 parking spaces per unit. So we've historically have found that you need 1.5 parking spaces to to satisfy the requirements of the residents. But you also have a certain number of people who tend not to move their cars, that have a car. They might use it once a week. And so that we've been able to allocate parking spaces accordingly. So the people that use them every day tend to want parking spaces in the garage and convenient to the doors. People that have a second car who don't tend to use them is frequently where as long as we can find them in a parking space where they can use on an occasion. This is not a lot of parking spaces to the north, but it will help us fulfill the parking requirements that the tenants look for. So we, you know, we have tenants who will not rent spaces, will not rent the unit if they can't have two parking spaces, for example. And so we have to have enough to allocate at least one per unit and then in some cases two. So I envision that these parking spaces to the north will help us accommodate the, the requirements. But I also see them being assigned to people who don't use it on an everyday basis. In fact, if you were to go by one Boston Way, there's, there's a white Mustang parked on one of our spaces on the street. I don't think the car has moved since it's registered and everything, but I don't think it's moved since they moved, they've moved into the apartment. So I envision some of those parking spaces to the far north being assigned to residents of that, like that. And then the four spaces and the some of the ones more adjacent to the community buildings would be kind of open to support the retail as well as provide parking for, for the residents and guests.
This is Bobby. Can I just make a comment, Bonnie?
Sure.
Yeah, Lou may kick me under the table, but he's not next to me, so he can't do that. Just that kind of as a Newburyport resident who uses that rail trail every day because I commute, you know, when I commute into Boston, I use that rail trail to get on the commuter rail. And just having seen the dynamics over time, I guess I would ask for you all, not to cut this site too short relative to, you know, this idea of a sidewalk along Route One. I think is a mass DOT, well, it's a mass DOT kind of requirement. It also provides the opportunity for future, you know, if we kind of close the door to potential for people to walk along that edge, it limits future opportunities. In addition, I don't, I don't, I don't agree about the notion of commercial retail needing to be on the south side of this building. I view the, the, the whole experience of the rail trail, both this stretch and the stretch that runs all the way around the city as kind of this string of pearls. And, and you've got Metzies that's down at the train station. And, you know, for a while, people kind of thought that was never going to live. That's stuck around for a long time. Just on the other side of this site, which we haven't really talked about, adjacent to the woodworking shop is where Riverwalk has the beer garden that, you know, that has evolved into having this kind of very vibrant activity in the beer garden right adjacent to the rail trail, which is, which just happens to be like right across the street from where this kind of commercial retail space should be. And I think, you know, in my experience, a lot of people come from, you know, the downtown, the riverside of it. So I, I don't know that everything needs to be on the south side of the building. To me, it's like a series of experiences. There's different experiences that are civic on the south side on this Hill Street connector, as well as different experiences and opportunities on the north side. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there because we've been thinking about not just one part being active, but about this idea of how you activate multiple fronts along this whole stretch of this district.
The other thing, the other thing about commercial space, even though we may not have it, we are significantly supporting it. So Bob brought up Metzies. If you were to go to talk to Metzies and, and ask him if he's seen a significant increase in his business as a result of one Boston Way, and he'll tell you definitely yes. And he's looking very much forward to the second building going up in this building as well. So we're supporting the local businesses in this general area. We don't really want to be competing against them. I suspect that, and I've spoken to some of our residents, that they, they go to the beer garden across the street. They go to Metzies. Metzies delivers. The, we, I, I mentioned the Rising Tide Coffee Shop on Pleasant Street, who comes with a food truck and every morning at nine thirty and serves coffee and pastry to our residents. And she has 10 to 12 people come down. So I think we are, we are supporting businesses in this general area that historically haven't done all that well. That we, we all know that that Metzies building was vacant for over 10 years, if not longer, probably 20 years. And I, I think we've helped secure his, a little bit of his future.
Okay, are we ready to move off of the retail and look more at circulation and, and other areas of the site yet? Because I think there's some issues with, for example, the, the pedestrian connection. I'm a little confused because I see on this site plan, it goes through the rotary. And yet on one of the renderings, I saw it miss the rotary altogether. So where is that connection from the crossing at Hill Street all the way along the south end of the property, the site and into the rail trail? Can, can one of, Scott, can you answer that for us?
I can speak, yeah, I can speak to that. The simple answer to that is we're still in concept and we're very much wanting to get through. We have, we're focusing on a lot of bigger picture items with this and that. That inconsistency is just that we haven't taken that final step yet as a design team to do the polishing that you're accustomed to seeing on a final plan. We have received comments back from staff, both John Eric and Caitlin about that. And we're, we're already working on, this was my expectation is that it will be moved outside of the turnaround area. So if you kind of follow just the pure circle of that, that will be defined with the in-laid flush curbing. It will probably follow that route and we'll, we'll look at the parking a little bit, make sure we have a safe interface there.
Okay, good. Other comments from planning board members of issues we haven't dealt with yet? Bob?
Sure, I, I just would like to talk for a few minutes about parking in general. And, and the way that the parking is laid out and the way you get to numbers, I think there were, there were some comments a few minutes ago that I think explained a few things, but the way I understand it, there, there are below grade, there are 83 parking spaces, I think. There are 23 parking spaces as you enter the project. And then there, I think about 20 spaces up to the north. And of the 83 parking spaces at the lower level, I think about 16 of those spaces are tandem parking spaces. So that, that may satisfy the, the 1.5 car per space kind of market, market average that you've seen on, on the, the adjacent projects, but, but they're not, they're not freely accessible spaces that, that potentially should count against the 106 or 107 spaces that are required on the site per the number of residential units. So we're kind of back to just understanding again, how all of these pieces are intended to come together to satisfy the overall parking requirement. So I understand the 23 on, on the way in. I think the the below-grade parking, although it's improved from the last time around, still has some challenges in terms of circulation and access to spaces and maneuverability. That, you know, as the plan develops further, I think you could continue to look at. But I think we need to talk about whether this satisfies from, from an approval standpoint, what the parking requirement really is. So 16 of the total number of spaces are tandem spaces. So they're, they're, they're difficult to get at. If you want to pull up the, the parking level plan, we, we can take a look at that.
All right, Bob, which were you looking for?
If you pull up the lower level plan.
Yeah.
That shows parking.
Yep, page 20.
Like, this is Scott. I can potentially speak to that, to Bob's question.
Yeah. So if you see, as you come to the bottom of the ramp on the near side to the left and right, there are tandem parking spaces. Which, which may satisfy particular users and cars that are second cars for families and not used all the time. But those are not spaces that are, you know, freely accessible and, you know, really should factor into the, you know, 106 or 107 parking spaces that are a requirement. So so if you kind of take those out of the mix, you're still pretty close to the parking requirement on the site, but you know, it's, it's, it's broken into pieces. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on, on how you get to the numbers that are the requirement versus numbers that the developers are seeing as a kind of, you know, market requirement for them.
Scott, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to that. So I mentioned in my presentation, we, we aggressively made an effort to minimize the parking to the absolute minimum that would satisfy both market and zoning. So here are some numbers for you. Just to, Lou mentioned that at one Boston Way, they have a ratio of 1.545 parking spaces per unit. The current ratio with the tandem is 1.39 per unit. So we're just below what Lou would like to have for market needs, but we're close. As far as the requirement, based on the zoning, we're required to have 107 parking spaces. So if we take out the 16 from the 128, we have 112 spaces that are freely accessible from any open aisle anywhere on the property. So we satisfy zoning at the same time. The tandem parking spaces came up as we were brainstorming all sorts of ideas on this and how to make it efficient. And speaking with Lou, he felt confident that exactly to your point, Bob, that, that families with two cars would lease two spaces and they would be assigned to those apartments and that wouldn't be an issue. And speaking from personal experience as well, who lived with the situation with my wife for five years, it was never an issue. And frankly, it was efficient for us. And from a, from a building footprint, if we can tandem spaces like this anytime, because we don't need extra pavement for aisles or extra building for aisles, we can build this right into the program. So I, I think, I think we are checking all the boxes with respect to zoning and market demand, knowing that we are a little below what would be desirable from what the market is asking for.
And I, if I can just respond quickly, I, I agree. It's just the, I guess the only point I was making is that the spaces to the north end of the site then really are required to be part of that residential calculation to, to make this all work if you're not counting the tandem spaces. But, but I think that's okay. The, the only other suggestion I would have is that, again, from a circulation standpoint, I think Arrow Street needs to keep looking at, at, you know, car turning radius and coming to the bottom of the ramp. And there are some spaces shown that are pretty tight. You know, to the edge of that ramp and, and entrance coming in that you can maneuver into them, but you know, it's, it's a car maneuvering at the bottom of the ramp with potentially other cars coming in. And I would just think about that a little bit as the plans develop further. I understand these are very early diagrams, but I think the intent is there. And I think this is a big improvement over, over where you were the last time we looked at this, but just, just keep, keep the circulation in mind. And I assume also, these are all assigned spaces so that, you know, the, I don't have to find a way to turn around if I can't find a parking space down here. This is a one-way system, really. Or a dead-end system, rather, that, that requires really that all of these spaces be, be assigned. Otherwise, you got to find a way to turn around at the end. So all of this can work and it's not unusual for buildings like this. But I just keep, keep trying to fine tune as you go forward.
Okay, thanks. Don?
It's just a, Bonnie, to build on your point with respect to parking and also circulation. I actually happen to have liked what was done with the, with the parking. And one of my concerns was generally, I don't like to have that much parking or at least have it permeable. But because there's not even any really public streets right around there, if there was ever any overflow with stuff. So I like the tandem. And then again, I do think, we'll call the North 40. I do see people parking there. Uh, I, I do see people parking there and, and I think some of us in the planning board have witnessed this in streets, people park their cars there and they don't move for literally months. So what Lou had said that, that he's seeing in Boston Way, I think is very symptomatic of, of what we see in, in some of these congested areas, at least in the south end. Number two, with respect to the circulation, uh, I do think we're going to get, uh, and I appreciate the design team is still working on. So I would just ask them, when they take a look at the rail truck connection from Route One, the south part, uh, I think you're going to find probably more people will take that if they're walking to the train station. Again, I'm mindful that I'm not sure the train volume will ever be what it was with work at home. That's, that's a different issue. But where I'm coming from is, is if you, if you would cross the Route One light, light there, the, the, the existing building there is a very nice sign. This is no trespassing. Do not use my parking lot, et cetera. So while at least most people do, I think there may be more of an inclination to people to take that connected to the rail trail and then head on south and hit the train station. So my point is you'll probably be finding people walk, coming across there perhaps more during that time of the day. At the same time, people, the residents may be exiting the parking lot. So I would just say, when you take a look at that, just perhaps keep that in mind. And, and conversely, perhaps that scenario, what I just described is not going to happen. But if you do agree that it would, then just take a look at some of the safety aspects of it. Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to, uh, did someone want to respond from the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Bonnie, uh, Slum and Kuti. I, I just wanted to make a, a couple of quick comments of maybe of interest, nothing really to do with this approval process, but at, uh, One Boston Way, when, when I was negotiating with the MBTA, uh, one of the things that they, uh, not only did they want to sell it because they needed the cash to, when they sold the property for capital improvements, but they also were looking forward to increase in ridership. And they said, what do you anticipate? And they said, well, ten percent of the units, uh, we expect as regular ridership. We just did a survey for our traffic engineer this week, and it's turned out that twenty-one percent of the people at One Boston Way used the rail. And I somewhat agree with Don, I'm not sure the train systems will ever be the same, but you know, there is a lot of discussion about light, uh, electrified rail. And, and that's probably in somewhere in the horizon, which I think will really rejuvenate, uh, that, the Newbury Port line into Boston. But I thought it would be a point of interest to the board to know that twenty percent of our residents are relying upon, twenty-one percent actually are relying upon the, uh, train.
Okay, thanks. This put some perspective on, on transportation. Rick, I believe is next.
Uh, thank you. Um, just, uh, to point out, the forty R zoning is a standalone zoning, so the regulations within that zoning are standalone. And, um, unlike perhaps other parts of the city, uh, this, the forty R zoning doesn't prohibit tandem parking. So these tenant spaces actually do count toward the, as far as I can see, toward the parking requirement. So I just, so I just want to make that point because I don't think we should exclude them. I think they make a lot of sense uh, as an efficient way to, um, you know, as, as I think Lou said, provide for two-car households where one car is hardly ever moved.
Right, okay, good, um, clarification. I also don't want to overlook, um, these rather detailed just, um, comments from Jordy Vining about landscaping and circulation. We've hit on several of them already. Um, I'm wondering if the, um, development team would like to comment on any of these that we haven't dealt with yet or that are appropriate at this time, because I don't want to push you into details that you're not ready to discuss until we are clear on the site plan. But if you'd like to comment on any of, um, Jordy's comments, this would be the time to do it.
Bonnie, this is Bob Ulich.
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have them in front of me, but I do recall he had some concerns about some of the, uh, some of how we characterized the landscape that we were retaining on the north end. And some places we had clearing and grubbing and other places we had protective language and we can get that sorted out. I think, you know, we've clearly recognized the importance and, and after having walked the, the site, you know, understand the value of the, the oak grove that's to the north there. I, I think we've also recognized in having discussions, you know, and Scott Cameron, you can feel free to chime in on this too, that there may be some trimming of the trees that is necessary uh, along that edge of Route One while retaining those trees in order to, uh, open up enough view quarters that, you know, we can maintain safe visibility from the new parking lot to traffic that is coming, uh, southbound along Route One. So we're going to be mindful of that. I think we've also, you know, some of the language talked about clearing and grubbing to remove invasives. There is invasives in and amongst those tree groves. So I think some of the language probably just needs to be massaged so that it's kind of consistent with what Jordy's thinking and what our approach is relative to kind of not negatively adversely impacting the existing trees there while removing invasives, you know, in the areas that we're talking about.
Right, yeah. So you're both going in the same direction.
I think it's just a matter of syntax and language that we're talking about.
Yeah, there was one thing that came up in discussion with Jordy and Rick and Andy and myself on Monday. And that's, um, related to the sidewalk, if we, on the Route One side, if we assume that one's going to stay there, and for the moment we will, um, because of the, uh, access it gives to the building on that side. Um, we were looking at that sidewalk and one of your renderings, it goes across the opening, the curb cut at, at the south end of the north parking lot. And then it just stops. It's one of those sidewalks to nowhere. We were wondering if you're not, and now I'm given the discussion tonight. Yes, thank you, Andy. Given the discussion tonight, I don't know if that's part of the requirement that you've understood from MAST DOT for a, um, sidewalk over on this, um, side of the building. But it seems to me, if anything, this sidewalk, if it's providing access to the building, that bit of sidewalk there is, um, is irrelevant and you could replace it with, um, more landscaping and just have it end of the, uh, at that one curb cut. Would that make sense?
Chair, I can, I can reply to that. This is Scott. The, the short answer is yes, that actually was, uh, a requirement of MAST DOT. To extend that up, they wanted it to the northerly curb cut and terminated there. So we turned it into the parking area. So at least, you know, somebody's parking there could come into it and it would be bringing you into the, um, actual curb cut where people are turning into the site. Uh, the anticipation is that, uh, this is future planning for MAST DOT to have a walkway along Route One.
Okay.
Uh, this is Andy. Could I just ask, Scott, do you have another follow-up, uh, discussion with MAST DOT relative to this plan of the project?
I have not personally had that conversation. Uh, Scott Thornton, who, uh, is the traffic, uh, engineer, uh, is dealing with those communications with MAST DOT. Uh, so it's an ongoing communication right now with them. Uh, we've received some initial feedback, which we incorporated into the plans. Uh, as I mentioned, another, another comment was, uh, moving the sidewalk. So it's entirely within the state layout. Uh, we really didn't like that idea, so we're, we're pushing on that. So we're, we're trying to negotiate what we've, we hope is, is best, uh, for all, uh, about the city, uh, the applicant and, and finding some compromise with MAST DOT.
Understood. I guess I would just ask, uh, you know, again through the board, if, if, uh, either myself or Jordy or both of us could be pulled into that next, uh, looping back with them just again, to see if there's anything else that could be done to tweak, uh, the plan in light of their feedback. We know that, uh, MAST OT sometimes has a slightly different perspective on things, but just to walk through those particulars, because sometimes they, they can understand the community's concerns as being relevant to the project as well. So again, not, not any particular, but we'd like to be involved in that discussion here.
Okay, um, while we're still up here, well, I don't know which one to do first. All right, now that we're out here, I'll come back to the north parking lot. Along up the other end of that, um, sidewalk, where, how does it connect? Does it really connect into the crosswalk and what's going on at that point? And if you guys need to talk more with MAST DOT to, um, clarify that, it just looks messy. It doesn't look like it. It all links up very well. And I understand that there's some consideration for reconfiguring or somehow redesigning that crosswalk. Do you guys know anything about that? That's at Hill Street. Anyone on the applicant?
Yeah, um, there, there are definitely some challenges, uh, with, with that crosswalk. One, a lot of it, uh, and in that area, a lot of it is not on this property. We don't control that. And it, it gets very narrow in that area as well. So we're, we're, we do have the comment, we're, we're doing our best to take a look at that. And see if there's anything we can do there to improve it, but it, it narrows. You can see how close the lot line is for the abutting property, which is twenty-eight Parker to that area. That's what we're, that's what we're up against.
And, and Scott, I think the question was just if there was any, uh, ability, it looks like there's some space in the right of way, the master to you right away. Uh, to try to make a better connection there, I think was the, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was.
Yeah, the G, the GIS isn't fully telling of the actual space available there. Um, I would defer back to the site plan, which shows the property boundary in relation to, the property line is actually closer where you can see in this aerial defense. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I think what partly what the board might be getting at is that the plan set doesn't go far enough to address the connection with this intersection.
Yep.
So, yeah.
I see Alden's hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. There was one other point that, uh, Jordy, uh, raised in his comments, and that was about a deed restriction on the undeveloped northern part of the property by the, by the north parking lot there. I just wondered, um, if there was any comments on that, and if, any thoughts on, on that?
Restriction. I, I, uh, this is Scott. I think I need a little more clarification on that question. I'm not aware of a deed restriction.
Yeah, I, I think he was, he was implying that, that there, that he would like to see a deed restriction on the undeveloped part. It, I think part with that oak grove is, but I, I'd have to go back to his letter to see the exact language.
I'm sorry, Alden, are you talking about Jordy Vining's comments?
Yes, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, again, I don't want to speak for Jordy directly, but I just, my understanding of the concern there really is that, uh, try to do for the rail trail, have a, an undisturbed area. You know, so the site plan itself would be sufficient, uh, provided it, uh, protects as much as possible of that vegetation or the screening that's there.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if that, if, if they were looking at that as, as a possibility.
Yeah, Andy, um, may I speak? This is Lou Manicucci.
Sure.
Uh, the, is it deed restrictions tend to complicate my financing when we try to get these projects financed. My, my thought is that if we have an approved site plan, and we, but we must build it in accordance with the approved site plan. I'm not sure why a deed restriction, you, wh- what purpose that would serve. So I would just like to comment, unless it's entirely necessary, it just complicates my title. I mean, these projects, uh, when all three of these projects are built out, this is going to be close to a hundred million dollar investment. I have to go to banks and institutions to try to get them financed. The cleaner my titles, the better off that I am in the long run. And sometimes these little small superfluous restrictions in the title just complicate the, the financing process.
That makes it really clear, Lou, and you're right. If it's a good, as it's going to be, a good detailed site plan, that will show where there is protected, um, undisturbed land. Yeah, on the property. So that should take care of it. While we're here, the curb, getting into this north parking area. Um, I've discussed with other people, um, some, the idea that maybe the, it's a little tight for entry. If you're coming off of Route One, yeah, traffic doesn't whiz through there, but it appears very fast. So if you're coming off and there's any kind of a backup, you need plenty of space to maneuver in the parking lot. I'm wondering if you guys want to consider taking out the first two, maybe even four parking spaces. Yeah, right there. For safety purposes. It just might work a little better.
Yeah, and this is Andy, this, this, several of the staff, I think, as you know, uh, with the comments we received, several of the staff here have a similar concern.
So please put that into your hopper of considerations.
Okay, uh, I, I guess I, I just, uh, I'll just be repeating myself, but I, I actually envisioned that those spaces would not be turned over, uh, frequently. So, um.
That's the problem. Yeah, I'm sorry, Lou, that is the problem. Having cars right there and maneuvering, coming in maybe with a rather, um, short notice to get in, in there so that someone's trying to get off of Route One. They need space to move around in there. And so if that were just open, it would just, and if there were more than one car coming in at the same time, it just gives them the space to maneuver in there.
Okay.
Chair, this is Scott. Yeah, I, I, I have your comment. Um, I, I will take another advisement and, and go back with, uh, Scott Thornton and, uh, you know, also working with MAST DOT, who would, who'd be looking at that as well. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and come back to you with our, you know, our professional opinion on those spaces.
Okay, great.
Uh, Chair, could I also raise another question relative to parking?
Yeah.
Just looking at the site plan, just again, the technical question, recognizing the discussion the board's had with the applicant about the number of spaces and, uh, safety concerns, layout and so forth. Again, you know, these are tweaks, I think, to the, the plan that, uh, folks are working with right now. But I'm just wondering from the designer's side, maybe the architect's side or the civil engineer's side, is there any ability to, if, if there's a need for additional parking spaces to offset things that might be adjusted on the site? Is there the ability to extend, uh, you know, underground that garage at either end, uh, in the site to accommodate a few more spaces? You know, recognizing like Bob said, that the concern about maybe some spaces underground. I don't, myself have the issue. I'm, I'm more aligned with what I think Rick said on those, uh, the tandem spaces. But, um, but if there is a concern about that, is there an ability to extend, uh, the building underground a little further to get those spaces?
Uh, I'll let Joe speak to the building. Uh, that end of the building idea, we'll note, we, we didn't hit on it tonight, but we did add a rain garden into that area. Uh, in, in support of the sustainability, low impact design input.
This is Joe Circa, which, so, uh, we could look at extending the, you know, the basement level for parking. We could only probably do it on one side. So it'd be very expensive. Uh, because we're at a pinch point on both sides of the site with that triangle. So we could only extend the driveline and, and maybe one side of parking.
Okay. Trying to see what outstanding issues there might be. We are assuming, and I think you mentioned, one of you mentioned this in passing, that you are in touch with Phil Christiansen and DPS through John Eric. So we're going to leave those details to assume that you guys are going to work that out. And if there are any issues, you'll bring them to the planning board. Is that, um, appropriate for you, for the team?
Works for us, yep.
All right. Um, and, and of course, well, what I'd like to do actually is I think there's one outstanding issue right now. I'd like to get a straw vote from the planning board members on where the retail should be located. Cause I want that to be clear for the applicant, so they don't start messing around with it. And, uh, aren't, aren't, uh, going in the direction we want them to go in. So let me just see, um, you can physically put your hand up. Um, those who would like to see the retail moved more to the center of the site. So, okay.
Sounds like being south.
Yes, south, more south. Yes, south, more south, and um those who would prefer to leave it where it is and work out the details that have been discussed so far. Okay. All right, so I think we're going to leave it where it is. Um, that's clear. The other thing is, I don't think we need to take a straw vote to tell you guys that the team that we. Certainly like the site plan um a lot better than the previous one, and that you're definitely heading in the right direction. So that should give you some confidence to work out another level of detail. What more from anybody? Let's see, first of all, I see a hand up for Don, so let's see what he's got on his mind. Now you'll have to unmute before we can hear you.
I lowered it.
Oh, you lowered it. All right, great. Okay, so back to what I was going to say, anything that. Certainly on the staff report, for those of us who have it in front of us, um, that is outstanding, that should be discussed at this point. Um, to give the design team um all the information they need to move forward. And I include Andy in that and then. Any board members who want to highlight anything at this point that we may have left out, and don't worry about it being too detailed. If they think it's too detailed at this point, they'll tell us. So whatever's on your mind right now, I'd like them to know about it. Okay, we're going to send them off to do more work? That's the consensus, or we're so exhausted with this, we need to move on, but I think this has been a really good discussion. And um my question to the design team is. Is it realistic, given our joint interest in moving along efficiently? To have you come back on January fifth? Which is after the next two weeks of holidays. Is that much work going to get done on your part as well as the reviews that have to happen? By Chris, Christiansen and John Eric um and others, um, realistic to see that we would have much progress made? Um, by January fifth, or would you prefer to come to our second meeting in January, which is whatever date it is?
Nice. This is Scott. Um, I guess, Andy, do you want to, do I go first or?
Oh, no, that's quite all right. I, I, yeah, my thinking was just based on the, the relevant factors here, it's probably the nineteenth is more realistic to the, the point that maybe the chair was getting at, but. Um, like, you know, like the chair said, we have the fifth of January and then the nineteenth after that.
I mean, if you think, yeah, let me just say that if you think you could get some things done that you'd want us to look at on the fifth. Um, for a sort of check-in, that's doable, but I don't want to drag you all back here, um, unless it's, um, it's going to help you.
Yeah, I, uh, this is Scott, so I think um I'm in that position where I'm steering the bus on, on this, because we're onto the technical piece. Um, we have actually continued to advance all the technical design and peer review response work forward. Um, even over the past week since you received these plans. I, I did speak with Phil Christiansen earlier today. Um, he did not express any concerns about getting a response straight back to me. We actually went through several of the comments by phone today. Um, and I feel we're, we're on the same page. Uh, so I, I, I do fully expect to, you make a submittal on a technical basis this Friday morning. Allowing time over the break and hopefully be prepared on the fifth to have another conversation with um some of the comments we heard tonight. Um, the coordination, a lot of it is just like uh planned reconciliation coordination, like crosswalk area, we, we just got some cleanup to do. So I think our, our team definitely feels the fifth is the date.
Okay, we'll be here and we'll be happy to talk with you.
Honey?
Yes, uh, Rick.
Just want to clarify, so. There, there's a, there's a new utility plan that's required as part of this, correct? And there's a lot of reconciliation between the site plans and the landscaping plans and the architectural plans. So has, has, I guess that's the question I would have, I, you know, the, 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 um, for example, the site plan doesn't show the two. Uh, side entrances or exits onto the Newbury Port Turnpike where the, the architectural plan does, so it's some pretty significant differences. And I just. Want to be sure that, you know, that, that, the, the plans that you have on the day after tomorrow. If that's what you're saying, are going to be resolving all of those things rather than have us. Spend a lot of time next meeting and then spend a lot of time, time, two meetings after that, so it's, it's really important. That you, that everything to the maximum extent possible does get resolved in this next go around, I think.
Scott, is that realistic?
Uh, yeah, our, our next hurdle in the, in the, in the critical path, I guess, is the technical review, and that, and that's where our focus, so my expectation is on Friday, you're going to get the technical package. Uh, with the utility plans and the drainage and the, and the construction details, that detail. Uh, the reconciliation piece, uh, I think, uh, the sidewalks are already coordinated. Um, uh, you know, I can't speak for the other team members, but I, I think we're very close and, and even if that came in, you know, the. The week before, over the holiday week or, or some other point before, I think we're, we're ready, but at a minimum, I, I'd want to be prepared to talk about the technical pieces. And some of the questions, for example, the entrance uh on the northern end of Route One, things like that. Um, with the board, so you know where we're at, and, and I think that would be a good use of our time. Uh, as a polishing coming into the meeting on the nineteenth, where hopefully we can. You know, uh, or I hope maybe we could be coming to the finish line there.
So that's where you would see all the reconciliation and the plans all matching up.
I think on the nineteenth is yes, yep, so one, one more polishing, more on a technical basis for the meeting on the fifth is what I would envision. Bob or Joe, I guess, speak up.
I think that sounds correct from Bob's perspective, that, that, that the nineteenth would be. Make more sense to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Right.
I agree with that too, Joe Circa, which here.
Okay. Well, I hope you guys have time to um have some holiday vacation or visits or whatever. Um, but we really appreciate your pushing this and we don't want to get in your way, so we will take, I'll take a motion to continue to January fifth. Planning board members, wake up, I need a motion.
So moved, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Alden, okay, and I will call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we'll see you on January fifth. Um, this is a really good productive meeting, and I look forward to the next one being equally productive. Thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you for all your input.
Yes, and uh, from, from the developers' end, we, we want to thank you and for your time and effort and. Appreciate it over, especially over the holiday season and wishing everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year.
Thank you, saying to all of you as well. See you then.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, planning board members, we are going to move on to. Approval not required for forty seven Marlborough Street and, um. I'm wondering if Ed Dixon is, we have to, good, all right.
I'm here.
Whoops, we're getting some feedback. I don't know if you have two um devices on, or can you sort that out on your end?
Let me see what I can do.
And if, if it's just the one speaker in the room, if you can shut the one speaker set off, that will help the echo effect. Um, I did well, he's trying to work that out, pull up a plan for the board. But I'm happy to speak to it if the board wants, uh, I don't know. And are you with us?
Yeah, I have, um.
It, it would appear that you're running two devices in the same room, and if you could shut one of them off, or the speakers at least, um, that would prevent the echo effect that we're getting.
Yeah, okay, the only problem is I may have hard time hearing you. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Hello?
Yeah, and uh, we can hear you, but you can just shut off the speakers, uh, we.
On the computer, even though it's not working, shut the computer speaker off.
Okay, hold on.
His technical advisor is working with him.
Okay, do you hear me now?
Yes, lovely.
Perfect, thank you, Ed.
Is that better?
We just lost you. I think it might be easier, Fandy, did it if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah. If it's all right with you, I can give just an overview of the plan. It's a pretty straightforward, I think, as an A and R, if that's all right?
I think that's very straightforward.
Okay, um, yeah, so, uh, you know, if I could, just for the applicant, uh, knowing you have another A and R after this as well. Um, this is simply a lot split, uh, there, as you can see, the, the typical thing you see with these A and R plans, the required frontage. Um, and the required square, uh, that has to fit in the lots is shown as a, a light line type. Um, but as you can see, they're carving off a separate lot. Um, and then there's sort of a jog in the back here, uh, area to adjust for rear yard areas and some existing features, but, um. It seems pretty straightforward. The office recommends endorsement, uh, as is typical for these approval not required plans.
Any questions from anybody? Okay, I'll take a motion to endorse.
So moved.
Thank you, Don. Uh, second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, and I have to take roll. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, so, um, that plan is endorsed. Thank you. Sorry, Ed, um.
Thank you.
We got you twice. Right, and Andy, you were going to present the next one for um Story Avenue and Lieutenant Larry Drive.
Uh, sure, thank you, Chair. Uh, so yeah, that, I'm sort of uh presenting this one really because it's coming from the city, so, um. Probably familiar with the plan and the project, so, uh, some of you, some of you know, the Cutter or West End Fire Station, uh, is planned to be reconstructed. Uh, or redone as an entirely new facility, so, uh, in order to accommodate that, some of you might have been following the, the product details. Know that additional area was needed for that, so you see the existing building, an additional area here. Uh, in order to acquire that piece, um, it's being broken off from an existing long residential lot. Um, and uh, this lot will be remaining. Um, technically, this lot that's remaining is actually undersized, but the ordinance, the zoning ordinance was amended recently. To address something that we did not have, which was, um, uh, how we address situations like that in the case of an eminent domain taking. Uh, so that language is now in the ordinance, uh, addresses that, um, but, you know, otherwise this is your typical A and R plan. Um, and we are breaking off one piece, uh, from this lot and adding it to the city's parcel here, um, so that that project has the area it needs.
Okay, any questions? Then let's have a motion to endorse.
So moved, Rick.
Thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Heather. We'll call Alden?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, so that's endorsed as well. Um, we only have one of these sets of minutes, uh, for ten, twenty, twenty-one. Um, I know I've looked over them, I don't know if anyone else has, I didn't see anything substantive. Um, so we'll take a motion and then see if there's any discussion. A motion to approve.
I'll, I'll make it. I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Any discussion? All right, I'll take.
I had a question actually on, um. Was it, it's toward the end, I think, one of the votes. Oh, it was actually approval of minutes, so it was on, uh, the minutes of October sixth. I thought we started the meeting with eight members and then Beth left, so I thought we should have seven members, and only said there's six members voted, so I'm not really sure. That just may be a mistake in terms of, there should be seven members rather than. Rather than six, I think.
Okay, great.
Um, and then there was a point, there's a point in the, on the previous page, it just says Beth had to leave, question mark, that should probably just be.
I filled that in, I think, when I, my notes, you, um, to Linda, so that's taken care of.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll take a, a vote for, um, approval of minutes as amended. Uh, Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, um, other updates from the chair or the planning director, the only thing I know about is. Short-term rental units, uh, the two amendments, both the zoning and the licensing. Were carried over by the city council until the new session. But they have been reconciled. Um, they are quite a bit updated, and I think the idea is that they will be. And Andy can correct me if I got this wrong, I think they will be republicized for a final. Public, joint public hearing and city council adoption, um, in the new session. Um, and Andy had said that he would send those two newest, newest final drafts, um, to the planning board. I haven't seen them yet unless they came in late. Um, but we should both, we should be seeing both the licensing and the zoning ordinance.
Yes, you, you do, yes, thank you, Chair, I, so I will be, and I apologize if I wasn't able to get to it today, so I will be sending out to you a, a copy of the. Original version, uh, the amended version, uh, of the zoning, which, um, requires a license from the licensing commission, which is a separate ordinance. Um, but, uh, just due to some substantive changes, including the requirement of a special permit, um, the, we have to re-advertise the hearing before it's adopted. Um, so the council carried that item over as they are, uh, able to do at the end of their session into the new set, new year. Um, and they'll take that up at that point, the first meeting, you know, in January, I presume that will be forwarded to the planning and development committee, uh, that they have for a joint public hearing, as is typical. Um, there are a few, um, you know, things being discussed in relation to that, that ordinance, but, uh, quite a bit of work has been done, um, in the last, you know, six or so months, if you will. Uh, on changes to that, so if you're interested, take a look at the language and the details, um, the, the Z B A would be the special permit granting authority, uh, not the planning board, but, um. But, uh, obviously you would be advising the council on any zoning, uh, change again, uh, for this particular subject matter come, say, January, February timeframe.
You said, uh, there are things being discussed still, are, are there?
Well, there are a couple of minor words.
That are still being discussed.
Uh, there were a couple of letter, minor language things that we need to work out with the, uh, authors of the ordinance, uh, more just to make sure that the language is clear. Um, there isn't any ambiguity and so forth. Um, there are some other things that need to be taken into account, so one of the things that. From the office's perspective, we, we had raised with the council, uh, was just recognizing that we do need to make sure we have the adequate staffing and the boards. Uh, in this case, the zoning board appeals, um, may need to, to consider additional time to, to handle the number of hearings that they might have. Um, so it, it depends a little bit on, on what sort of, um, an influx of applications might come in. Um, there are a good number of short-term rental units in the city, not all of them would comply with this ordinance, of course. Um, but, um, there would be an influx of applications and inquiries and so forth. From folks, and we just want to make sure that the boards are prepared for, uh, whether they need additional, you know, hearing nights for that sort of thing. Um, and that the staff, uh, can adequately keep up with both the, uh, initial administration and, and, you know, working with folks to determine which ones are compliant, which ones aren't. Uh, and then the, um, sort of enforcement things that might come with that, because there are some folks who are operating who may not be. Able to, uh, on a go-forward basis, and, and some time will need to be spent on, uh, on that aspect as well, so we just wanted to make sure that the resources are there. Um, to implement and enforce as, as we, you know, add to the zoning ordinance, we add new provisions and requirements. Um, we need to make sure that the, there's adequate staffing and that the boards can do that. Right now, they typically max out on the number of hearings, um, per night, this one board appeals. They typically max out on the number of hearings per night, this one with appeals. So we just, we had talked to the Chair and Vice Chair about the possibility of additional meetings if that's needed to handle the influx and we just want to make sure that's taken into account. Aside of that, I've talked with the sponsor, one of the sponsors about the different vendors or platforms online that help to monitor what folks are advertising for short-term rental units. And that helps us to monitor and basically make sure that folks are in compliance. But again, that's an automated system, so we still need someone who is boots on the ground here that can deal with the enforcement side. They can automate some of the tracking and the reporting and documentation of things that are in compliance or not. But as far as actually implementing and being there when someone calls in about a, you know, a parking concern or a nuisance, you know, concern in the neighborhood and so forth, we do still need to have, whether it be the police department going out or the zoning administrator and the staffing to handle the paperwork. And like I said, the board members, the applications that might be coming in.
Is there still discussion about a third party being involved in, in the monitoring and enforcement?
Yeah, there is, and I do think that's, that would be necessary in this context because of the way that the short-term rent units are advertised, the amount of time it would take. The, it'll be really time or cost prohibitive for us to sort of monitor that on our own. So the use of the online platform and the algorithms they run to sort of give us reporting and essentially document things that have been advertised and so forth. So it helps us to keep an eye on what's happening out there. But then again, the, that would be used essentially as a documentation and reference for the zoning compliance essentially and the license compliance to make sure that folks are adhering to that. And we'd have to basically cross-reference what we're seeing there through the vendor and online with what we have for permits and what the ordinance says.
Andy, that's a lot of work to do and I am just wondering, to set it up, I am wondering if you have the possibility of moving forward on any of that before the ordinances at both ordinances are adopted? Because I'm worried about timeframe and they're talking about enforcement coming into play June 1st. That means all of this is up and running and there are applications approved. And people are in short-term rental units before, legal ones, before June 1st. And I don't know how that's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, the software side of it could be done, right? But I think that the bandwidth or what might be coming in in a very short amount of time, whether it was part of my concern was the board itself, even aside from anything the staff needs to do to administer all, that the, the board members themselves might be, you know, in the position of having to have a meeting every week or whatnot to handle these things coming in, even if they're somewhat similar. Remember with a special permit process, it's not, it's a little bit more involved in the license. You know, you have all the butters that might be interested in coming to the hearing and weighing in. So that could be quite a bit of time being spent by the board itself, a member, the volunteer members to do the administration. So that was, that was one of the reasons why when we first talked about these ordinances, you know, almost two years ago at this point, really, we had talked about the licenses being the, the primary control and the way of dealing with nuisances and not lack of compliance. So there's been some adjustment in the way that's being done, but I think we can have a further discussion about that. And again, making sure that if it is going to be implemented, you know, X date in 2022, that we can actually handle that influx of applications and, you know, to the Chair's point, handle the enforcement on the effective date or the enforcement date that's called out of the ordinance.
Okay, this is good background for everybody to just be thinking about what you want to raise as any kind of issues separate from what's written in the documentation when we have the joint public hearing. There may be good advice, let's put it that way, for the council in, in considering how this gets rolled out. They usually just approve something and then it's off to somebody else. In this case, I think it would be irresponsible if we didn't have that conversation during the joint public hearing. So give it some thought and see what advice, concrete advice we might be able to give to them to help make this happen as smoothly as possible, let me just say it that way. Okay, are there any other updates or questions from the board members you'd want to ask Andy?
If there are any questions, I would just note again, I think I mentioned it prior meeting, but with the new mayor elect coming in and New England Development, obviously interested in discussing Waterfront West. We've heard about, you know, their potential interest in that and working with Avalon. I would expect, you know, on one side or the other or both, some discussion again of Waterfront West, you know, come next year. So, you know, again, if you're, some of you have already been involved with those discussions over the years, but think about what you think makes sense there. Maybe you might want to look into some of the old documents, if you have interest in looking at some of the old, you know, analysis that was done in the last couple of attempts to rezone Waterfront West. We can, you know, post some things and provide additional information for those of you who aren't familiar with it. But there was some discussions several years back, in a couple of instances, about Waterfront West rezoning. There was debate about, to me, the fundamental issue we continue to come back to as a community is, what is the right density, what is the right height, you know, size and massing of structures there? And I think that it seems preferable to me, given the process that folks have gone through on Waterfront West before here, that we try to work out that issue a little bit more upfront this time around, you know, irrespective of where an actual sponsored ordinance may come from, just so that we're not all in the public forum and working in the weeds on language changes and other things like that. If there is not actually yet a reasonable consensus on size, scale or massing, this, it was quite obvious that the community was not comfortable with the amount of density or the size of what was being proposed by New England Development last time around. And they have, with the Avalon concept, proposed something similarly scaled or in terms of height and amassing. So given that that may not be consistent with what the community thinks is compatible with the historic downtown, it's right there. It seems like that may be a good starting point for us is to work from there and work backwards into, you know, the other parameters of the project, rather than focusing on a bunch of other ones and not being able to reach consensus, you know, here on that. Whether or not New England Development is on the same page as the community about what that massing is, is obviously understatable. There might be some debate there, but for us as a community, I think, you know, there was some discussion about whether or not we had access to NED's model last time, whether or not we make our own to work out some of these issues. But, you know, again, just think about Waterfront West, what you think makes sense there. And certainly the board members here who have been here for a while can, initially to myself, you know, let you know what's been discussed previously and, you know, what some of our waterfront strategic plans and other things say about imports of mixed use and, you know, scale and size and so forth.
Andy, the, I know the Waterfront West page from a couple of years ago is, still exists, but there doesn't seem to be an easily accessible link to it on the page. I wonder if you could just put the link back up on the project updates? Because I had to search for it to give it to somebody else fairly recently and it, and you can find it by doing a search, but you really have to find the right planning board meeting or the right.
Yeah. You are, you are right on target, yeah. Sorry, no, we had it as underneath our project updates at one point, it might have slipped from there. So I will definitely work with Diane tomorrow to get that obvious link back up there from the Planning Department page. And, and then, you know, we can go from there to see if there's anything else that you're looking for, we can add it to the page.
There's a lot of good information on that page.
Andy, to your point, I feel like a broken record, but since you brought it up, I'm gonna reiterate what at least Rick and I have been pushing for, which is to revise the overlay district. And in order to do that, we need to have some type of modeling of what the massing and scale and so on of the proposals that we've looked at so far, ours and theirs and even the old version of the overlay district to compare and contrast. My understanding is that we need $60,000 to do that. It may be a number that's totally wrong right now. But I've received pushback from you and others that we really can't have a reasonable discussion of a revision to that overlay district until we can get some modeling done of the information we've gathered over the years. So unless that's forthcoming, I don't see how we can make any progress with an overlay district. And all of that is to say, another question. So Avalon and New England Development are looking at a 40B. Are we just going to ignore that and go on with putting out what we would like to see there in terms of an overlay district?
I'm sorry, did you want me to speak to that or were you hoping for?
Yeah, I'm really confused. I'd love to go ahead and ignore that whole, you know, business because I don't know anything about it anyway. So it makes it real easy. But why would we even try to make an argument to City Council to fund some modeling to help us revise the overlay district to prepare for the next application from them if they're going to come forward with a 40B?
Yeah, no, those are all great questions and then crossing points. I, you know, I, it seems to, I am not as concerned about, at least initially, or at least, you know, in the near term, concerned about the threat of an unwanted 40B or an undesirable 40B type project. I do think with the Haley's 40R project before you, there is the ability for the city to, in approving that project, to take a, what we call a safe harbor from 40Bs, applications at the board. We would put these on the board of appeals in a position to, you know, reject a project that is, you know, when we were making progress towards our affordable housing units. So on the so-called subsidized housing inventory. So MECO's projects have actually been the more substantial increase in the cities of affordable housing in recent years. And, and we get credit for the projects at the Haley site as well, when that goes come online, in this case permitting from the Planning Board. That carries over when you get to billing permits and occupancy permits to, you know, to take credit for that. But we could basically have a so-called safe harbor for a couple of years as a result of that project that you have on your docket right now, should that be approved in the near term. But, so I guess I'm less concerned about the so-called threat of a 40B in a, maybe not as appropriate location or context or composition, although that is something we need to take a look at. We have been preparing our zoning board of appeals for what would, you know, what a hearing process like that would look like and so forth. But, but I do, I do think it benefits the city, even aside from New England Development, to look at the zoning for Waterfront West, since it's not something that has successfully come to completion as a redevelopment or project, irrespective of New England Development, just for the city, from the city's perspective, it hasn't happened yet. And some of that obviously is within the owners, the property owners' control. But from our end, for instance, I am talking to the grant administrator tomorrow about a potential grant from the state we were interested in applying for. And that, that grant may be the way that we are as a community, aside from asking the council for funds, one way for us to pay for not only assistance with some of the zoning pieces, the more technical aspects, you know, that we might want to roll in, to actually have modeling done on our end so that we have, we can work with our own consultant on, on these types of things, whether that's picking up the plan that was last looked at or some other variation of it. But to maybe address at least the massing scale and size issue to some degree. There's lots of ways of getting from point A to point B, but certainly, you know, we beneficial, you know, from the city's side to see some progress on Waterfront West. That's not to say that it's the exact same plan that New England Development wants. But I do think there's some benefit on both sides if it is in fact productive, of course. And I do think that has a large part to do with whether or not the property owner recognizes what the right scale and compatibility is and, you know, whether or not we can get there together.
Well, I just want to go on the record as saying the Planning Board could take the reins on this one and start the discussion of a, an overlay district. Bring the council in for that discussion and show New England Development that we are serious about seeing something there, but we want to see what fits for us and that they are not going to drive this next round.
And they have reached out to the mayor-elect, the new meeting's been scheduled yet, of course, since the last one, the mayor, Donna Holliday, I had with them in Boston some weeks back. But, but I suspect they'll be interested in obviously, you know, talking with the mayor-elect coming in the door and getting a sense of where he stands on Waterfront West. And obviously with the new composition of the council, that's a factor too. So, and anything that they may have in their legislative agenda for the upcoming session. So a lot of moving pieces there, but I definitely would expect, you know, all things being equal, some focus on Waterfront West and trying to see if we can get a little further along than we were able to do last time. And again, that's not to say any fault was done on our side, of course. But just to see whether or not anything more could be done there.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Well, thank you for hanging in there. That was really a lot of work to do. Wishing you all very happy holidays and going to be back in the same place first of the year. So it looks like we're on Zoom for the foreseeable future. I'm not even going to go there with masking and increased infections. I think this is the safest route to go and it makes it easier. So if you're thinking we were going to meet in person, it's not going to be for a meeting anyway. All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Fight it out, tell me who I got.
Heather.
Oh, great, me, so moved.
And the second?
I guess it may, Don.
All right. On a roll call of the year, Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Good night.